All right, it is seven o'clock. Everyone ready?
Okay, welcome everyone.
Oh no, I will be catching down.
Oh, okay.
Stand by in five, four, three, two, one, cue.
Okay, welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council, 7:14 PM, February 14th, 2022. So I know if you're here tonight, you're seriously interested in this topic that we got going in front of us. So call the meeting to order and can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember Kay.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banano.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. And could you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
See, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're now through the beginning of the meeting. And at this point with the city clerk, could you make the announcement as to how people can participate in the meeting and also the fact that we have the availability of Spanish?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Tonight's meeting will include the availability of Spanish interpretation over Zoom. All participants will see an interpretation button, which looks like a globe on the toolbar at the bottom of their Zoom screen and should select either English or Spanish. Please do not leave the selection on the default setting as this will impact your ability to hear the meeting. Please note that the city is unable to see if members of the community are utilizing the Spanish interpretation channel. Therefore, you may notice pauses during the meeting as we give individuals who may want to provide comments using the interpreter some additional time. Any participants using the interpreter to submit a public comment will be given double the allocated time to submit their comments for a total of six minutes. If you experience any technical difficulties during the meeting, please email cityclerk@cityoflivermore.net. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand at the beginning of each item. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. Residents using interpretation services will be provided six minutes to submit their comments. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council and the city council is not required to answer any questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And at this point, we're going to reorder the agenda. So item 6 dot 1 will come up next. And it must start at precisely 7:05 PM. So we're a couple of minutes away. So we'll just wait until 7:05 occurs and then we'll start 6 dot 1. So and TV 30 will let me know when that is and we'll start up.
It's 7:05, so we can go back in.
Okay, thank you. We'll now do agenda item 6 dot 1, which is our third public hearing to receive an update on redistricting efforts to date. Receive public input on the composition of city council voting district draft maps prepared by the city's demographer. And provide direction to the city's demographer for revisions of the draft maps to be considered at the fourth public hearing. So at this point, could we have the staff consultant presentation, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. This is Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager, and I'm going to introduce your city clerk, Marie Weber, to introduce and give the staff presentation for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. This is your city clerk, Marie Weber. Following the receipt of updated population data from the 2020 census, the city of Livermore is required to complete the redistricting process to ensure the district boundaries remain substantially equal and still protect the rights of members of communities of interest. So far, the city council has completed a community workshop on October 18th, held public hearings on October 11th and January 24th. And tonight is the third public hearing to collect community input related to the redistricting process. Throughout this process, substantial community outreach has been done to engage residents across a variety of platforms. Some examples of the outreach that has been completed since the last public hearing includes weekly social media posts, phone calls to engage community organizations, and a press release. As of the January 31st due date, 17 draft maps were submitted by members of the community and four, including the existing map, were provided by Michael Wagaman, the city's demographer. The city also received a total of seven communities of interest submissions. Mr. Wagaman has provided demographic data for each draft map, which was included in the agenda packet. Tonight, the city council is being asked to receive a presentation from Mr. Wagaman, hold a public hearing to receive input on draft maps and public plans, and provide direction on maps and potential revisions. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Wagaman for his presentation.
Good evening, council, and we'll just hop right into that presentation, which is mercifully will be very short. And we'll get straight into actually looking at the maps. First, as was noted, this is kind of a pivot point in the process because before everything has been kind of an abstract process. And now we're going to be looking at actual plans, both the ones that I put together based on your direction at the last meeting and those that were submitted by members of the public. Also, before the goal really wasn't to reach consensus. We were looking for as many options, as many different thoughts. So you could see how those interacted with each other. And now is the opportunity to start narrowing those down now that you see what those practical implications of that direction were. Seeing what you like, see what you don't. And I will note, if there's something that I put together that you absolutely hate, doesn't bother me in the least, that is again, the part of this process is to to look at what works and what doesn't. And third, just note, you're not limited to the plans that you see this evening. So if there's a plan that is close but not quite there, or if there's two plans that are, you know, you like what's doing one part of the town, but not in what's doing another part of the town, not everything's compatible with each other. But this is an opportunity to look at those. If there are kind of small to medium sized refinements that we want to do, we can do that live during the course of this meeting and create a new plan during the course of the meeting. If there's something where, you know, I honestly can say, I just, I don't know exactly how to make that work, but I'll keep trying. That is kind of direction that we can do and implement in the days to come. And that's because we still are, do have a little time left in this process. You can see where we are in the prossmus, in the timeline. The commitment is that if there are any revised plans coming out of this evening to get them up at least seven days in advance that March 14th hearing, as a practical matter, our goal is to get them up as soon as possible. So as to maximize the time for public feedback before that March 14th date, when you would be moving forward with planning on trying to select a final plan. As a reminder here, the criteria that are spelled out in state law, I'm not going to belabor them. Only to note that this is, as you look at that criteria and you think about what you thought about the maps, this is a good, safe place to come back to to say, I liked this plan because it did a good job of using understandable boundaries in X. Or I hated that plan and what were you thinking because it split a community of interest in Y? That's a good way to kind of ground that conversation. The other thing I just do want to note, and the council is familiar with this from the last meeting. But for those members of the public who may be listening, there was a secondary criteria that was identified by council at the last meeting for consideration, which is the concept of deferral. And what deferral is, is simply people who won't get to vote for a member of the city council other than the mayor for six years because they're currently set in a district to vote in 2022 and they get moved into a district that is set to vote in 2024. In the case of Livermore, that means folks who are currently in districts one or two be moved into a district that districts three or four. That's something that happens when you have staggered elections, but was identified as something that all other things being equal, being a secondary criteria that the council did want to look at. Again, I'm not going to, this is kind of a quick summary of the the process we're going to use. And as was noted, I want to say your city was, did a tremendous job of getting great public participation with those 17 public plans. We have the plans that I put together, but really it is a testament to the work of your staff and your outside consultants who are working on outreach that the public has been really engaged in this process. A couple of notes. One is I'm only going to present at the start here, the draft plans that I put together. That said, all of the plans that were submitted, I have loaded in the system. If you want me to present any of those at the end of this, I'm happy to do so. Walk you through what those plans do, any legal compliance issues that would need to be dealt with, and how those plans line up with your prior direction. The only thing obviously I can't do is speak to the intent because I didn't put those together. But you may have some of the members of the public calling in tonight to talk about the plans they submitted, and that's great. Second, I will note that in some of those public plans, there were issues that are identified that would require amendment before they could be adopted. I want to emphasize that does not mean those plans should be rejected or ignored. In most cases, those were really kind of technical issues. So the median in the middle of the road wasn't assigned to a district or was assigned to a non-contiguous district. Those are easy things to correct. So if you like one of those public plans and an issue was identified, that doesn't mean it's rejected. Those were just things that I didn't clean up. Because again, this is a transparent process. We wanted to make sure that was done in a transparent way. And even those plans that might require more substantive changes may have elements that you like and want to identify for other plans. So just to note that, even though I'm not presenting them now, that doesn't mean they're not an important part of this process. This is just to note for members of the public who are following along, you've got a great website set up where people will be able to see the current plans, any revised plans, and really follow on with this ongoing discussion. And with that, I'm going to switch over to the interactive redistricting software, which you hopefully all recall from our last meeting, but now will be a little bit more exciting. And first off, I'm going to show the green plan. And the green plan should be familiar because these are the existing boundaries. And the only reason it was given a plan name is to make sure that the public was aware that your existing boundaries are legally compliant, are are an option, and are an option that the council has actively discussed. The option of just leaving things the way they are. The total deviation under this plan is 8.3%, which is within legally acceptable boundaries. So it is a plan that is compliant if it's one you wanted to consider. Now, there was discussion at the last meeting about trying to reduce population deviations. And that would lead us to the blue plan, which tries to leave, starts with a goal of reducing those population deviations, avoiding that deferral issue we talked about. And what it does therefore is just makes one small change. I'm going to actually overlay the blue plan on top of your current boundaries. And you'll see this little slice. That's the only area that shifted versus your current boundaries here, which is border basically by Rincon, and I'm going to pronounce some streets wrong and I apologize, and Pine Street, and this area shifted into District Two. The upside of that is it does reduce the population deviation down to 2.0%. And it does avoid any deferral because districts one and two are sequenced at the same time. The downside of that is that this is potential splitting a potential community of interest that was identified in the last meeting. And this is a good example of trade offs, right? Where different things are going to be in competition. You might not be able to do everything at the same time. So this is that trade off of try to reduce a population deviation, but potentially impacting a community of interest as an example. So I'll let the green blue plan stand by itself, just so you can see it for a moment. And then I'm going to turn it off and I'm going to talk about the purple plan. And the purple plan again starts with the idea of trying to reduce those population deviations, minimizing deferral, but accepting some deferral happening. And it really starts with two areas that were identified by councils, areas that maybe could move and be in different districts. Those two areas are one in the north, this area, and I'm going to put on your existing boundaries again over them so you can see where they are. This area that's bunk bordered kind of a long junction. And then the secondary area that's below College and the Arroyo. And those were both areas that were identified that might be able to be moved into different districts. The problem that came up was that this area long junction, this area long junction was identified as potentially moving into District One. However, the problem is that District One is overpopulated and District Two is underpopulated. So that actually has the effect of making the deviations even worse. I will note that this area here is one that you could in fact move. This little block here, there's two areas here, this little block here. If you did want to follow the Arroyo the whole way through, could be moved into District Four. And so if you like the current lines and just want to move that one block, that would be an option. But again, if you're talking about shifting this larger area, it has the effect of actually increasing the total deviation. It would be within acceptable population limits. But it would move that total deviation from 8.3% to 8.6% if you were to move it south into District Four, which was an option that was discussed. So the purple plan takes those two areas, moves them, but not necessarily into the the districts that were identified with the area again along Junction being moved here into District Two and District Three moving into this area kind of south of College or by the Arroyo. The effect here is that it reduces the deviation down to 2.2% and only about 1,000 people are deferred. Though again, not necessarily hitting all those community of interest markers that were identified. And I will note that there is a public plan that was submitted that is almost identical to this. I want to emphasize all the plans I put together were drawn independently of the public plans. So if there are similarities between public plans, there wasn't any backdoor dealing going on. It's just the fact that the pub, this is a transparent process and the public is hearing the same direction that you're giving me that when they look at the options that they're going to consent it. The final plan, and then I can stop talking, is the red plan. And it starts with the direction to see if there are some of those communities of interest that could be better drawn together. And particularly looking at some communities that also have some correlation to the Latino community in the city. While at the same time, it's still placing emphasis on trying to minimize changes, minimize disruptions to other communities from the existing lines while still trying to get at some of those issues. So in looking at those goals and various demographic factors, some of your zoning data, there are kind of two key steps that were identified to, if you wanted to consider that goal. And again, I'm putting back up your district boundaries for a moment. And those two kind of key areas where there are changes that would allow for some of that is for District One to move a little bit to the east. How far? There's questions, but there's some areas here to the east that look like they have some similarities to the areas that are currently in District One. The other areas here, this area that is south of District Four are not District Four, of Fourth Street, kind of south of your downtown, which again has some similarities to the area north, but also are a little different, at least based on some of that data that I looked at. And so what that triggers is this kind of three-way rotation. Where District One moves into District Two and takes some area in here. And you see different options for that in both the red plan and in several of the public plans. Then you see that because of that, now District Two is underpopulated. And at least in the red plan, you see it moving south down towards the railroad track. Again, in some of the public plans, you see bigger changes, but I'm trying to make the smallest degree changes that I could. And then you see District Three moving into that area that's kind of in South Livermore, south of the downtown. And if I overlay the red plan, you now see those three changes, that area around Junction, using Livermore as a major understandable boundary to shift those areas, moving District Two south to follow the railroad track. That's something that was seen in some of the community of interest testimony. And again, moving District Three, this case to Fourth Street. I will note that there are several public plans that were submitted that follow this basic architecture of keeping District Four largely the same south of the Arroyo, but make larger shifts here. And those are all, you know, acceptable changes. Those are things that you can consider. They just aren't shown here because again, of that council direction, try to minimize changes, avoid those deferral issues because those public plans, what they do create, and again, is a trade off is they either tend to create larger deferral or they have larger deviations because of those shifts. And at the end of the day, if you look at some of those plans compared to this one, you're still ending up between in District One with a Latino C V app that goes from about citizen voting age population C V app that goes from about 17.7% under the current plans up to about 20 to 20 and a half percent. So those are certainly options that you can consider. Just wanted to make sure you are clear why they aren't being presented in in the the plans that I put together. I will just put up the red plan by itself. I'll note that this isn't something you're legally mandated to do or required to do under the federal or state Voting Rights Act, but again, was based on council direction at your last meeting. So again, you have four plans that came from me. One is a status quo plan, one that kind of makes the minimum change to lower deviations, one that makes a few more changes, and then this one that makes just a little bit more. And then again, you do have your 17 public plans that were submitted, any of which I'm happy to present based on council direction. And Mr. Mayor, I will note that with the interactive software, I can, I will go ahead and take it down now, particularly while you take public comment. But as you have this debate and discussion, I'm happy to have it back up, turn on and off maps, whatever you direct as far as what would best facilitate this conversation. And with that, I can stop talking and answer any questions.
Okay, I think what we've done in the past, I see councilmember Kick, you've got your hand up. I would prefer to go to open the public hearing and then come back to us. And I'm going to suggest a process that's, the spirit is to so we can have a robust discussion tonight, but efficient. And so what I'm going to suggest is that we have the public hearing, comes back to us, and then we'll both speak about how we're thinking about this and ask questions. And then we'll get through it. So if we could do that, so at this point, if that's okay with everybody, okay. So I would like now to open the public hearing. And do we have anyone who wishes to address us? And see clerk, do we need to repeat how to participate? Or do you think your instructions at the beginning were good enough?
Mayor, I believe my instructions were clear in the beginning.
Okay, thank you. So it's, who do we? So you will manage the public input at this point.
The first request to speak is from AK Burnham, followed by Kyoko Takayama. AK Burnham, please unmute yourself.
Dear Honorable Councilmembers, I've created district maps both a couple of years ago and in three phases so far this time, and I've learned a lot along the way. As my knowledge progressed, I first focused on communities of interest, starting with my own, and then turned to the division of the North Downtown Neighborhood. I sent you a detailed letter including maps yesterday because it's really hard to talk about this just in words. So I'll just hit up the main points now. I think the current major dividers are not coincident with the communities of interest. Railroad tracks east of downtown and Stanley Boulevard in the west are clear residential neighborhood dividers. And First Street, perhaps with the jog down to homes to the creek is a good connector of those two. All districts should touch or come close to touching downtown. We live near East Avenue School, and I think we should be in the same district as South Downtown, the South Downtown Neighborhood. We walk through that neighborhood several times a week and we know more people in that neighborhood than all of North Livermore combined. The South Neighborhood, the South Downtown Neighborhood does not belong in District One. I also tutor at Junction Avenue School, and it is clear that Livermore Avenue is not the proper dividing line between districts one and two. That was highlighted by Mayor Warner in the last public hearing. Perhaps Junction Avenue is the right line, given that the school itself has no population, but perhaps District One should also include part, the apartments just northwest of Junction School as proposed in once in middle. That's a good question to consider. The last map I submitted formally had a larger variance than the current districts, but is much better regarding communities of interest, in my opinion. It's actually similar to the red plan. It also solves what I consider to be a serious problem that the current District One has the largest population and is also likely to grow the most. In contrast, the variance in my plan will shrink with time. I discussed a few tweaks in my written analysis to reduce the variance in my plan. And in my view, the council's time would be best spent focused on those and similar tweaks suggested by others in order to come up with the best possible balance of community, communities of interest and population variance. Thank you for your consideration.
Next speaker is Kyoko Takayama, followed by Alan Marley. Kyoko Takayama, please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you very much. Regarding the community involvement, I actually defer because I actually submitted three maps. So that means there are less than 20 people actually submitted the maps as well as community of interest. I haven't seen many involvement. And my friends actually tried to put them in and app was too difficult to use, so they couldn't add the community of interest. So public involvement needs to be improved, in my opinion. I actually can live with a plan red. Majority of staff, it's my community of interest is respected. And also, as the previous speaker talked about, Northern Livermore community of interest is mainly respected as well. So I do support Plan Red. And I would like to remind everybody the criteria shown was actually ranked mandate criteria. And the follow, which was actually requested by the city council member, which is not one of the criteria. So that should be the last things to be considered. And the community of interest should be very high. And all of the, most of the maps submitted was actually within the reach of the population equality, which should be within 5%. So I would love to hear other people's opinions. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Alan Marley. Alan Marley, please unmute yourself.
Mayor and city council, when drafting this map, I hope you will prioritize first the communities of interest. And if the website failed to work for anyone, I wonder if their communities of interest could be relayed verbally or by email or something. Perhaps the previous speaker can relay them if she knew those people. I definitely understand if technology fails for I definitely understand if technology fails for some people. And I think that this community of interest should be respected first and foremost. Secondly, I hope we will look to sensible geographic boundaries like streets. And then thirdly, in a distant third, the question of deferment and equal populations, which I think are of lesser importance. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jackie Coda. Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you for taking my comment. Just wanted to state that one of the criteria with regard to redistricting being based on communities of interest actually like to have a definition from the city with exactly what you mean by communities of interest. Because seems to me like it should just be based on population, geographical location. And as far as community of interest, to me, that sounds like absolutely race baiting. And our city should not be focused on the race or gender of people with regard to redistricting our city. It should just be based on population alone and geographical locations. Thank you.
There are no more requests to speak, Mayor.
Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the council. And if I may, I'd just like to then elaborate a little bit more on the process that I'm considering and see if I can get your buy-in. But before I do that, I think your indulgence, I'm going to be a little bit philosophical, like Councilmember Monroe is occasionally. And what I'm, what I want to mention, just as a setting this up, is a concept called Wabi Sabi. And that's a, it's a worldview derived from a Japanese Buddhist teaching. And it was something I was, my wife made me aware of, you know, I'm a scientist type and like to calculate everything to great precision. And she helped me just have a little bit more of expanded worldview. And this is it. The basic concept is that nothing is ever finished. Nothing is ever perfect, and nothing ever lasts. And I think you can see that in our first districting effort, things have changed in that period of time. And we know that one of the key drivers here is population changes. And even the day that we make the map, it will then move. So let's, what we need to do is seek balance amongst all of these factors. And if we drive too analytic on one and think about, and, and we need to also put into these more aesthetic principles and more qualitative. And I think what we just heard was a, from the public comment, some consideration of this concept of community of interest. And that's not something we're going to be able to quantify. So as we have some variables, we can quantify exactly, and others that are more frankly a feeling. And I'll just say, the reason I'm mentioning this concept is that we have a very complex problem here with a lot of variables. And I would just say balance is the key. We're not going to pick, there isn't just one perfect solution here that we're trying to seek, but we are trying to seek balance amongst them all. And this community of interest, I think, is the, is going to be a driver, and it will get to how we think about it, and people will have different opinions. So one definition I've heard is, you know, where do people shop? Where do they travel? Who do they interact with? It's not just simply the demographics, but it's really, what is the sense of community? And I see people walking by my house, I, you know, gone by others. I have a sense of what I feel my own neighborhood is. I think we all have that, but that's kind of what has to get in here. So the process that I'd like to suggest for tonight's meeting is that we ask questions that we have with the demographer. And we spend maybe twenty minutes or so talking about, like I just did, as to how to think about the problem, what matters. And after we've heard from each other and had the questions answered, then the second part of what we'll do is pick a map that we think is either close enough, or one, as the demographer said, he can adjust on the fly. And I'm also suggesting that we do spend some time picking one map for a council member, and that that will give the public a better insight into our thinking. And it will also maybe spend a little bit more time tonight, but it's going to save us a ton of time in the final meeting. So if I can get buy-in, the suggestion is we spend time on how we think, not necessarily trying to convince others of how we think, but just exposing how we think. Pick the map, and then we, we set up for the next meeting. Does that, first of all, does that process make sense to everyone? Can I get a, just, okay, we're good to go. All right, so then I will go back here and now start to recognize people. So I've given my thought as to how I think. And clearly, I'm not going to get hung up on variance to ultimate precision, because it's not going to be something we can do. And we really have to think about how to balance. So I see Councilmember Kick was up next.
Tell Nova thank you for, for me, for giving you that, that little definition there. I was wondering if the demographer could overlay, if you have access to overlay the communities of interest that were submitted. There weren't very many.
So I did not digitize all of those communities of interest. I do know roughly where they are, but I do not have those. That's a request. I can have that for the next meeting.
Okay, um, could, do do you have access to them? And can you just give me the street name so I can like do it on my own little piece of paper in front of me, just so I can have a better visual?
Yep, and I can show, do a share screen here. If you want to give me a moment, I can bring them up on the screen. They just aren't loaded in the same software, so if you want to bear with me.
Yeah, I think it would be good to show people what was submitted. And so we can all get on the same page of which communities of interest were submitted, and we've all seen the same thing. That would be great. And then my, while, while you're doing that, my way of thinking is just that those are the most important pieces, and you know, it's unfortunate and frustrating. I do have to agree with a community member that said we could have done better. And I did get some feedback saying, well, we're doing better than other cities, and that doesn't mean that there still isn't room to improve. I think language is, is key here. And when we say something like communities of interest, it does make people confused. And so, you know, being a little bit better about where do you walk? Where's the walking distance within your area? What school is your children? Are your children assigned to which grocery store? Do you frequent? Generally, those basic questions, I think, help people define those communities of interest better. We have to do this every ten years, so just, you know, to keep those things in mind as we move forward so that people can be more educated before we ask them to input data on on what to some seems intuitive, but to some seems very confusing. So looking forward to seeing what those communities of interest look like, and thank you.
And I'm going to bring up right now the communities of interest that were brought, submitted through the the district or tool, and then I may have to skip off or in order for to staff to bring up any that were submitted otherwise. And, and just so we remind you of what that's defined as, I will, I will say communities of interest are the hardest part of this process, because there's not a fixed data set. It's easy to say how, whether a district has the same number of people, at least according to the census. But this is the more abstract part of this, and it is always a struggle for any jurisdiction of any size. The definition or state law is a pop, is the population that shares a common social or economic interest that should be included within a single district for purposes of fair and effective representation, which is aligned with it a way of saying, who do you go with? And even your next door neighbor may not have the same definition of that, right? Even if you live in the same neighborhood, you may not have the same definitions of the boundaries of that neighborhood. So these are the maps that were submitted through that online tool. The first one is called Springtown slash Vasco, which kind of takes up that northern, northeast corner of the city, coming down just below the railroad tracks. And I will zoom in here to see if I can identify that street that they're using. It looks like it's coming just down to Las Posita Road, towards coming down there in the Royo. The second that was submitted here is called South Downtown. You can see going up towards Stanley and First Street and coming down to College and stopping just short of the campus and coming down to Holmes. You can kind of see that area, and they did identify several specific locations that helped to find that community. The next is called North Downtown, is kind of the inverse, starting down north of First Street, running up along Murrieta to Pine, and then running down along Livermore, coming over to grab the Junction K school area. The next was not given a name, nor did they draw it in the software, but they decided as all areas south of Concanon Avenue and Wentee Street and Tesla Road. So basically describing the southern portion of this, of the city, which is generally seen in District Four in most of the publicly submitted plans. And the final is labeled as Southeast Livermore. And I'll zoom in on that area. And it's basically valued by Vasco, and that's Mines Road. Again, the railroad track, and this would be East Avenue, so roughly bordered by those areas. And then I can stop talking, and then if another councillor wants to give feedback, I will double check to see if there are any additional communities of interest that, again, were not submitted through the online tool, but that should be noted, but I just wanted not hold up your debate and discussion.
Thank you. This was helpful.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just interject at this point. I mean, I've lived here, what, forty-six years? Those communities of interest are what match my sense of the community as well, all of them. So Vice Mayor Banana.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll give you a couple of my first thoughts, and then I do have a question, and then maybe a couple more thoughts. So my, my feeling, I wasn't involved, a few of us were in the initial go-round of this, so I have had a little catching up to do. My, I guess my first principle is, let's not do any harm. We have a map that there was a lot of good thought put into. It's not perfect, and I, and I do think there are a few changes we should consider making, but I think we don't want to, and trying to make something better, make something worse or significantly worse. It is all about trade-offs and balances, and I, and I think we're going to be in that mode here for the next couple of meetings on this topic. You know, there's no free lunch in this business. So I think that that's one of my first principles. I think the, the other is we'd like to minimize deferrals where possible. There's only a couple scenarios where you really can, if you make any changes, unless you keep it one to two and three to four, you're sort of in a mode where you're going to have some deferrals. But I think it's, it's important to consider minimizing that. I think the population is where I have a question. And I don't know if it's for someone on our staff, or maybe Mr. Wegeman, and that is about how how do other cities in your experience and how might we think about handling the deviations, particularly in parts of our city where we know we're going to have the most growth? I don't want to see the populations in D one and D two get, in D one, excuse me, in D one in particular, get a lot greater, because I think that's where the next time around, we're going to have probably something that blows the, blows the delta pretty quickly. So I guess I'm just wondering if there's a little bit of feedback from staff or Mr. Wegeman about how we might think about future growth and where we might expect it in this exercise. And then I have maybe one or two more quick comments, and then I'll be done.
Right. And I'm happy to answer that question. And the answer is that there's no requirement that you have to consider that. So when we're determining if the districts are of equal size, you are looking at that twenty-twenty census date. That is what determines whether you have too excessive a deviations. You are allowed, and you can decide that, just like deferral is a secondary criterion. You can treat that as a secondary criterion and say, we want to leave the district that we, areas where we expect there to be more growth, a little on the smaller ends. They have that, that proverbial bloom has a little bit more room to expand over the course of the decade. Again, that is an optional. It is not a requirement. But the one thing you can't do is say, we think there's going to be three thousand new people there, so we're going to leave that district, you know, at negative twenty percent deviation to wait for those. That's the part that would get you into trouble. And I do want to just quickly note, while I have the floor, there was one additional community of interest submitted, so whenever that's appropriate, I will show that on screen.
Okay, thank you for that. So the, you don't want us to talk about particular plans at this point? Or any thoughts on? I can wait until we get through this initial, this initial round.
Get through the concept, and then, then when we pick our own plan or describe it, then musings will become much more concrete.
Okay, then I just have one more comment. And, and I think, you know, this community of interest conversation is really important, and I, and I think we, we have seen that from some of the comments we've gotten, both tonight publicly and in some of the community of interest input. I'll just say, a lot of when we talk about these communities of interest, what I've heard is, even though they're not only geographic base, a lot of what we say is where do people shop, where do people walk, what are their neighborhoods? So those really are mostly people that you live fairly, fairly close to. My, personally, my experience with my son in particular was our community of interest involves sports. And those sports teams came from the, the, the young people that played on those sports teams came from all over the community. So it was very geographically diverse in terms of the communities that we did a lot of our socializing with. So there is, I haven't heard that brought up, and, and that is one where I think you can, you can see that it's not geographically based. It's quite often very much not. So we were playing, you know, at every corner of the town, we would go on weekends and in summers during the week to play with kids that came from all over the place. So I'll just add that, and I will end there.
Hey, thank you. I just mentioned that, you know, that would argue that we'd have one district, but we, we also have to have contiguous and.
I, I wasn't arguing that a bit. I was just saying there are some that are not geographically centric.
For sure. And we've, and what we have, our task here is to pick ones that are both that and geographically, we want not one or the other. So there, but that's the concept. It's community of interest can be very widespread. But we have to then divide up geography ultimately. So Councilmember Monroe.
Right, so let's see. So I've been looking at this pretty carefully, and the criteria that I would use, I've basically been looking at the criteria in order of priority that we've been given, and that's the way I've been handling it. So that's equal population, federal law, contiguous, neighborhoods and communities of interest, understandable boundaries and compactness. And, you know, that's, that seems to me to, you know, so that, you know, that does not actually include the deferred or not. And it, the, you know, to me, one of the most important things is taking a look at that equal population, which means that minimizing, you know, not, not to the, you know, keeping in mind this is a balance, but also keeping in mind there is an order of priority. So, you know, eight, I, I understand that we have up to ten percent deviation. But I guess that seems like, you know, as I said, I think last time, jumping the gun a little bit. That seems in, in a city, that's a lot of people difference in a city of our size. So one of the things I looked at is to keep the deviation I, I, under about, you know, three, four percent. I actually will say that the plan read, the five point seven percent is, that's one that, that I could actually would, is, is fine with me because there's this, there's an awkward place, and I know we're not supposed to be talking about it, but just in terms of that's of thinking about this equal population that moves, that, that's one that where that balance of, of understandable boundaries would, would, would come into play as well. I also wanted, was wondering, Mr. City Attorney, if you could speak to the meaning of federal law in terms of I also wanted, was wondering, Mr. City Attorney, if you could speak to the meaning of federal law in terms of how, how we're thinking about that, because that's a statement that, you know, is a little bit vague. So, and this is, you know, just to help us understand where that fits in with all the other criteria that we're looking at. And then, oh, and then I actually had one other question before I'm done.
Really, Madam Councilmember, if you're prepared, like, this is Jason Long Call, you're City Attorney. The federal law involves the U.S. Constitution as well as the Federal Voting Rights Act, to make sure we are comport with that. And has very similar criteria that you're looking at, compactness, geographic compactness, contiguous, those factors as well. Again, similar to the California Voting Rights Act, the federal Voting Rights Act do direct that race is not to be a factor to be considered. And the only circumstances where you would consider that is if you have a actual litigation involving the court. We don't have that there, so that's not before us. Also respects that you should take into account communities of interest and not focus upon parties or those affiliations as well. So that's what you're referring back to when you say the federal law.
Okay, and then my, my second question really has to do with the way in which we are gathering interest. I understand that one resident submitted three maps which are, are before us. And that still means we are at fourteen and I'm wondering Madam City Clerk, if you could speak to the comparative, because actually, yes, of course, we can always do better, Councilmember. Everybody can always do better. We know this, but comparisons do matter. So I would like to know compared to what, how are we doing?
And I don't know if you want me to step in here, but I'm working with a total of thirteen jurisdictions this cycle and you had the second most plans submitted and the most community of interest map submitted out of the jurisdictions I'm working with. Now, there's a lot of variance going on here and obviously if you're talking about the state redistricting process, they had thousands upon thousands of submissions, so it, it does vary widely, but at least just from the handful of jurisdictions I'm working with, that's what I can report and staff may have something to add there.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful and, and if staff has, you know, City Clerk can add to that, that would be great. Or not.
Evening, Councilmember. This is Marie Weber, your City Clerk. I can just speak to, we did a, a comparison of our neighboring cities to see with regards to outreach, kind of how we were doing comparatively to some of our neighbors and even went a little bit further to understand the level of engagement of residents kind of across the state with cities that were in a similar situation to the city of Livermore. So cities that had read, that had begun the districting process in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen and were now redistricting. And I can say that we had substantially more input on average. Most of the cities got between one and four maps and zero to two communities of interest submitted. And the city of Livermore did get seventeen maps and seven community of interest. So we can always improve on that process and we are doing our best to reach out to the community members where they are, whether that be in paper form or electronically or physically in their, in their area. And so we are doing all of those things to try and get engagement, but we are always welcome to feedback and improvement.
So, and I have one more question and this is for Mr. Wegerman and, and thank you very much. Both of you for, for that. I, I, my understanding is, is that the process we're going through is a little more intense than it's been and I'm wondering whether or not everybody is struggling with gearing up towards education of the public and so on. In, in, in other words, is this, are we doing something new and different? We, meaning the whole, all of us, the, the country, the state, the city? Or is, is, am I just new to the party?
No, the, the, as redistricting has grown more attention, quite frankly, as the software has allowed lowered some of those barriers to our participation as people have understood what it means. This is, people have engaged more and the states responded to that by passing what is called the Fair Maps Act, which required for cities and counties, a much more robust process of engagement. So this forehearing process that you're going through wasn't required ten years ago and now is required of every city and every county. So you are certainly seeing that increase and my guess is you will see even more of that ten years from now, that, that continuing thing. And it is a very challenging process, I will tell you from my experience, because this is still kind of a hard thing, nut to crack for people to understand, right? Lots of people don't pay attention to what the city council does, how you're elected, the nuances of your elections. And there's a lot of new trade offs to face here too, right? And it is a hard nut to figure out, how do you get people to engage in what are sometimes an abstract concept, like a, what is a community of interest? And so I would just echo those comments that there's always room for improvement. But what I will say for your jurisdiction is there's been a commitment to trying to engage your public as much as possible.
Thank you. That's, that's it for me.
Councilmember Carmen.
Thanks. So how do I think about this? I you know, I, I pulled up the criteria again to remind myself and I, I looked pretty hard at equal population. I mean, that was brought up the last time we met in this regard, so I was concerned about that and particular with respect to the current one, which I think is fine. And we spent a lot of time on it. We, the city council, I think in twenty eighteen, spent a lot of time on it. And we had a lot of input. But yeah, we could, we could do a better job on equalizing the districts, I think. The rest of them seemed pretty straightforward to me. Understandable boundaries, I think, was also important to me and I, I saw some where it looked like folks were just drawing lines around individual city blocks, just to get the numbers to head up to their, to their own criteria. So that did give me down to what Mr. Wegerman calls secondary considerations and that's deferrals. And I, you know, I still am worried about this and I will tell you why. When we met in twenty eighteen, to first start talking about this, the the input from the city was they all hated it. That is districts. They didn't understand why we needed to do it. They were concerned that some outside law firm was essentially imploring us to do this. And we took it upon ourselves to spend a fair amount of time looking at that. And eventually created the districts that we have today. I don't think the opinion of the city has changed that much. I don't think the folks, at least the ones that I spent some time talking to, are enamored with districts. So I do care about deferrals and because some people are going to lose the right to vote for a city council member for six years. That seems almost inevitable. And so I do, the way I've been thinking about it then is looking at the criteria, criteria that Mr. Wegerman has provided to us and then thinking about what are some of the secondary considerations? And for me, that's deferral and trying to minimize that. Because I think that if Mr. Wegerman, you can help me out here. I mean, you're, when you, you had the deferrals on your charts, but that's the total population within a particular area. And my estimate is about sixty percent of those would be registered voters. Would that be about right, do you think?
Yes, so I looked at those issues of deferral and, and based on some feedback did check and it is running about two thirds. Those are, if you look at the relationship with population to registration, so you know, back of the paper would be if you see three thousand people being deferred, it's probably about two thousand registered voters. As a, as a, as a rough math, I do have them for each plan. If there was a specific question, I did run that this evening.
Thank you. I don't have a specific question, but that was sort of the, my own mental calculations to make sure that I understood that we're not just impacting the, or the, the sort of the number of people we are impacting in terms of registered voters. So that's why I've been thinking about it. Following the criteria set up by, set by this process and Mr. Wegerman has provided to us. But then are there other things to consider? And for me, it's deferrals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I, I, I think that was helpful to hear everybody how, how we think. And so at this point, I'll go first.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Did you want to see that one community of interest map before you go into selecting plans?
Yes, please.
Yes, I was gonna as, because that's going to be, yeah, we're going to go into that. So you can do that now, but go ahead.
I apologize for interrupting. I just want to make sure we didn't miss that and it's very quick and it'll be a very familiar map. And this was submitted through one of the paper tools, which has a reminder to wow, different levels of access. We did have different options, including that paper tool. This looks very much like that southeast Livermore Community of Interest, except it goes south to include the areas below East Street and to the west of Vasco. And then it goes a little further to the west over to the community park. I think that's Livermore Community Park. So that's the, the one other community of interest map. Noting that there were also written testimony about how to divide the city off in referencing communities that they just weren't actual maps submitted. So I apologize, but I just want to make sure that got, but knocked off the list.
Right, well, thank you. So anyway, what I'm gonna so I'll go and give an example then of, of my thinking translates into a into a suggested map. Now, as, I think we've also, what I want to make sure it was clear is that we're taking our existing districts in a sort of a one map to consider in our final and that we have that there because we can then compare any other maps that we have to see if they improve. As was pointed out, we don't want to fix something if it's not broken and if we do fix it, we don't want to break it further, right? So the sense is, we don't all have to hit another map. There's no obligation to do it. But if we want to have a map for our final consideration, now we'll circle past all of us and we'll pick a map for consideration. Again, if somebody's already picked one, it's good enough. You don't feel that you need to just toss something into the mix for the point, you know, for no point. So what I would want to go with is, as I said, what I'm most interested in is this abstract concept of a community of interest, but the ones that were submitted, I do believe it's important to keep them whole. Now, I did pay close attention to the Alameda County districting process. And there were clear communities of interest that some maps split up, like the Afghan community. But the, one of the reasons those things were getting split up is people were too persnickety is the only word I can use, trying to get the population variance down below the required minimum. And so they were driving to that one variable very hard and then breaking up communities of interest. So I firmly believe communities of interest, if we meet the legal requirement, is it? Trying to go past it and then breaking up the community of interest doesn't make sense. So with that little thing, I want to say there were three maps that I think are worth, they're all similar and they're worth adjusting to get to a map that I would like to see presented to us in the final round. The three maps were Plan Red. The one that Mr. Burnham submitted, that's one oh four eight five two. And then there's the third one. I don't know who submitted it, but it also has the same elements. It's eight seven seven four two. Any one of those three maps in and of themselves could be good enough for the final round. But I want to save time in the final round and go now to suggest a map that will maybe be worthy of, even more worthy of consideration. So I think the place that I would want to start with is Plan Red. So if you could put that one up.
Mr. Mayor, just I want to clarify, you would like to make some live changes to the Plan Red Plan?
Yes.
Okay, that will take me one moment just to load that. So hold on one moment, sir.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
This is your City Clerk, Marie Weber. If it is at all possible to help the demographer this evening with regard to plan changes, if the council could each select their map and then go through each map regarding the changes that they'd like, that will make things more feasible for Mr. Wegerman.
You mean like what I just did? Or are you telling me I should do something different?
So if everyone picks their map first and then discusses changes that they want after?
Oh, I, I, well, perhaps, except what I'm trying to say is that somebody may not have to, if they see what's happening, they may not need to do that.
Understood.
No, I know. I'm going to stick with what I said if I could.
I'm loading that now, sir.
Well, I think I heard him saying Plan Red, and I think I heard Councilmember Monroe also mentioned Plan Red. So that's why it, it's, you look at it, it's a natural from my point of view. If we're going to do something different than what we have, this one is, got a lot going for it. But with a couple of tweaks.
So I do have this loaded, sir, for purposes of any amendment.
Okay, so I just, and what I'm talking about is relatively minor, but I, I do want to mention it. I believe in Plan Red, you put the south, the boundary between districts four and three at the creek.
That's correct. It is the creek until you get up to. Yeah.
So the point is, we specifically, when we drew the current map, put it at Robertson Park Road. That's on the other side of the park, up until Arroyo Road. And there was a clear reason for that. And that was that trailer park up there at the, at the intersection of Arroyo and College.
So it's the area in red that you'd like to look at moving into District Three?
There's only, in terms of population, the only population that's there is the trailer park. Otherwise, that is the park.
Yes, so according to the census, it's forty one people that would be moving. So you would increase the deviation District Three to two point seven percent. And the deviation in District Four would become negative point seven percent. You would still be within acceptable deviations. Would you like me to commit that change?
Yes, because I'm talking about community of interest. And I have to tell you, I believe that the people who reside in that trailer park have a lot more in common with the, you know, the District One, Three than they do in Four. And that, and that was the specific thing we did when we did it the first time. So that's the reason we chose Robertson Park Road as opposed to the Arroyo. Also, the Arroyo can move, you know, it's time, but the road isn't likely to. So that, that was that. That's, so that's the first little tweak. And that's a community of interest driven as opposed to worried about variance. Okay? So now, the next thing that I want to point out, that where red is differs from the current map is up there on the current districts at Arroyo Road in the north intersection between one and two. You put your cursor in that little right, in that, because it, you know, you're going to, you don't have to expand it that much. You, you can just put your cursor to where I, I just want to talk to it for a second.
Oh, I apologize.
It, it's, you know, that's, that's good. Just, that's good enough on magnification. You have your cursor, or you know, you don't, I put my cursor there. It's the north boundary, east-west boundary between one and two. Right there, okay, we just slow down, move your cursor left a little bit. That block. Okay, that block, okay, you can just hold it steady. That block is the one that moved from the current map across from two to one, actually, right?
There were two areas that were shifted. I can overlap the lines and you can see those. The one is that shift that you're seeing there to Livermore, the other being that area near Junction.
Right, right. I'm, I'm only talking about the north component at the moment. I'm just trying to, so that overlay, that piece got shifted right from two into one, right?
Correct.
Increases one. I don't know if I need to do that. But what I would, what I'm really interested in is the area over by Junction Avenue. And right in there, that does well at picking up everything, but the school is on the north side of Junction Avenue. So if you think about it, I don't know if you can do it, but that boundary right along Junction Avenue, if it were able to pick up the school, because that's the school where most of those people over in one go to. But that's, that's a really refined thing of just picking up the other side of the street. I don't know if that's possible.
We're gonna find out. So that's the Junction Avenue School.
Right. Now, don't know that, I think, the point is, nobody lives in the school. Right? So I don't know that it's essential to pull it across, but that is something to consider of bringing that neighborhood right there into one just to further refine it.
So that is currently picking up about 600 people. I'm gonna overlay the satellite imagery to figure out where those people that it's picking up are. And it's the houses you might be able to see there that are on the backside of the school. And that kind of in this area here, that's the area that it's picking up. So it actually is a little bit more of a change than you might
Right.
expect. If you did not take this area around the elementary school and just Junction, it reduces that to 525.
I missed that. If we, so if I, if I wanted to take this stuff to the east, let's see, the rest of the school.
So.
But not around it, right? Okay.
So you're talking, what do you say, school? Are you talking about Junction Avenue or Lawrence Elementary?
Well, the Junction Avenue School.
So this area that's been highlighted, which is Junction Avenue School, and this is all one census block, so you kind of have to take it all together.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
So that area is 525 people. It would leave the deviation of District One at 2.4%. I'm sorry, you wanting to commit that to District One. So District One would be at plus 2.4%, while District Two would be at negative 4.4%. So you would still be within acceptable deviations with that change.
Yeah, but then if I didn't, so if I brought, see, here's the trade off I'm thinking about is bringing that school across. But then I don't have to bring that north thing across. You see what I'm saying? Because I, part of me wants to take, take this across, but not that other north section.
So I could only move one section at a time, but I can make this change and make that change and tell you the net result if you'd like?
That would be good.
So we're gonna commit that change. And remember, we can go back, so nothing's broken. But if we then go back to the existing district boundary, which uses Portola as the district line until you get down closer to the the downtown area and riff showing back to that existing district boundary. I'm just cleaning up a little bit here. So if you made that change as well, District One would now be at negative 4.5%. District Two would be at positive 2.5%. So again, you would be within acceptable deviations with that change. You would maintain the option if you wanted to then look at the areas around Lawrence Elementary and adding those into District One, which would be under just that you're not required, but with this one change, you would still be within acceptable. Is that a change you wanted me to commit?
Yeah, I think that that's a good suggestion. But so what I'm, what I'm also thinking of, so what did you say District One goes negative how much?
So you're now see that number there where it's at negative 4.5% and District Two is at positive 2.5? So if you wanted to add something to District One in that same area near Junction, that would be that area right around Lawrence Elementary.
That could be useful to think about if you made that change, too.
So now your deviations, if that area was moved into District One, would be negative 2.9 in District One and positive 0.9 in District Two.
Wait, I see on the, oh, I see a minus 4.4.
I haven't committed the change yet. So if I commit the change, you'll see that number drop where it's now at those two numbers. I'm gonna hide the current districts so you can see them as they would be and see, restore the coloring. And now you can see that district boundary.
Okay, so that's, see, now it's, I'm really helping with the communities of interest. I've got my, what's my total variance in this thing then?
Your total deviation would now be at 2.9 plus 2.7, which would be 5.6%.
Okay, so that's, so the other reason I just point out, I think one of the other council members mentioned, we're gonna have the growth big time in one with the Isabel Neighborhood Plan. So but we're not, we don't have to think about it, but we're in, we're within tolerance. We've got neighborhoods of interest, I mean, communities of interest are now all whole. The only other change that I would make on this map, which is quite possible, is to you know, three is already up at 268. So this, this is almost good enough for me. And I like the fact of, on this one, as compared to Mr. Burnham's map, he came in along First Street. This Fourth Street is a good divider as well. And I live over in, you know, in the, across from the park. And my own sense is, I could be in District Three as long as it pulls in up to Fourth Street, I'm good with it. And I also like the fact that, you know, the Fourth Street coming into homes, because it's different on the other side. So this, this map is what I think is close enough to what I would want to see as one of those considered in addition to our current map. So that's, and so, and it meets all of the numbers, right?
Correct. So it looks like this is all acceptable. The one thing, if you do engage in a active line drawing tonight, is I would just accept the direction that if I need to make any technical corrections to make sure we're following the same side of the road, that kind of cleanup I can do offline.
Sure. And I think, and that's why, you know, your earlier admonition in the City Clerk is, you know, we don't want to wholesale sale changes, but this kind of tweaking, I did want to do this tonight because I do believe it'll save us time in the next meeting, because that's, I took us through what I would take us through in the next one. So this map, do you want to give it a name so we know what it is?
So I usually do variants of the names that were before. So how do you feel about the word Cardinal?
Yeah, that's cool. I like that.
April for me as a cow grab, but we'll go with it.
Yeah. Okay, so wait, so that's, I think that's it. And at this point, is there anybody? That, well, you have your chance now. You can, you can choose your map or you can mess around with this one or whatever. So let me see who's up next. Councilmember Kik.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is your city attorney. I think this was a good exercise that you went through, which is identify, councillors identify a map and their tweets they'd like to see. So the demographer can go away and tweak them for final consideration at your next meeting. But I would request that that's where you give your direction today, which is if you can focus on a map and say what you like about it, which you'd like to see changed, that way, Mr. Wagman can go back and return with final maps for your next meeting, for your final consideration.
Sure, yeah. He gave that caveat that this, you know, remember what I said, wabi-sabi, nothing's ever perfect or final, we're done. You know, so anyway, yes, that's fine. That is the caveat, is we're not locking it in. This is close enough for the next meeting. So we've saved us, spent the time now, but I've saved us in the, the next meeting. That's the philosophy. So, Councilmember Kik.
So I like the changes that you made to Map Red to create Map Cardinal. I do have an issue, though, that I don't think that that community of interest of North Livermore was actually kept whole. So I would like to see what would happen if we kept North Livermore completely whole, which would go a little bit farther. So if you can put Cardinal back up, you're.
Yep, I'm bringing up an alternate version because I didn't know which plan you were gonna go with. So I'm gonna go back into the, just so everyone can follow, there's the software as it's set up to present 20 plans, and then there's the software as set up to modify one. So we're now back into what we've called the card, clearly called the Cardinal Plan. So what was the area you wanted to look at?
Around Junction still. So I believe that the community of interest that was submitted had the line going a little bit farther on Portola. So you're taking, if you're going north of Junction School, you're going up to Portola and taking all of those homes around the school, because that, those children go to Junction and to, and or to Lawrence, depending on, you know, which part of the street they might be on. My daughter goes to Junction. We actually don't live in that district. We transferred there, but we walk there every day and I see that the families are coming from this neighborhood in between Portola and First Street. So it might be too much of a deviation, but I would just like to see what happened if we added into District One, all of that triangle of Portola into First.
And I'm looking at that submission now. So if you want to bear with me for one moment, I'm just looking at where the line, and I believe they referred, the submission you're talking to is the one that referred to what they called North Downtown. Is that the?
North Downtown was the, was the community of interest I would like to try to keep whole.
Right. And putting up those census blocks, so I can follow that along. And it looks like they at least through there and down and over. So it does look like the area that would have been described as existing within North Downtown, what they call North Downtown, is fully contained within District One.
Oh, okay. I did a very poor drawing on my own map then, because I added a little bit more of Portola in there. So if that's kept whole, I mean, that's my biggest thing, is I would like to see what a map would look like if all of those communities of interest that were submitted were kept whole. And so that doesn't need to come, you don't need to do this that second, but my direction would be to take this map, basically, and, and I would like to see what would happen if North Downtown was kept whole, South Downtown was kept whole. And the areas, I don't remember what else they called them, were, were kept whole that are currently in District Three, those little pieces of District Three that were kept whole. So.
So I'm looking preliminarily at the maps and I'm doing this relatively quickly. There are, I believe, three areas where this map would not reflect those submissions. One is the block that was just discussed, which is in one of the submissions, it included that as part of what they described as South Livermore. So that would be a contrary direction just to identify. The second area was the area that was defined as a resort of Springtown, Vasco. And they are just included these two additional census blocks, just going, three additional census blocks going a little further south of the railroad track into that area. There are 77 people in that area. So that would be whether that is fundamentally considered part of that or not, agreeing with that testimony. The larger change is the one that relates to the testimony that described. What was referred to is South Downtown, where that area was described as basically extending north to First Street and actually extending basically up to Railroad Avenue. So I'm roughly tracing the boundaries of that. So it'd be this additional area that was included with the other areas that are south of Fourth Street. So that would be the, that would be the substantial change in that direction. I'm happy to highlight that to see what that would do to your deviations. But just so you're kind of following along as I'm.
Yeah, that's helpful. So in, in those communities of interest, were South Downtown and North Downtown overlapping at all?
The, and I'm looking briefly. I do not, I believe there may have been a handful of blocks that were labeled as overlapping, kind of right over in this area right here, just kind of below Portola, kind of right along First Avenue. You know, those, I'd have to look a little bit more closely on exactly where they, those are, but roughly the boundary that was used for what was called South Downtown was again, going up to Railroad, which would roughly take you to this additional line. Again, that's the kind of cleanup that I can do offline as verifying that. But that would take moving that entire area into District Three would put District Three at positive 6.8%. That's why you're seeing in some of the public plans that do include that larger area where they're coming further south in District Two, going kind of past the laboratory and seeing that bigger shift happening there.
What would happen if that was added potentially to District Three and District Four was moved up a little bit? North is the direction, I mean, north.
So the other issue that you're having here is that in addition to District Three being at positive 6.8%, District One is now at negative 7%. So you are looking at bigger changes. So there can be a direction this evening that if it was a direction to preserve an option on the menu, this might be a thing that is one of those offline options of can I put together a plan that is in essence respective of all those communities of interest maps that were submitted simultaneously? It will not, to be clear, be compatible with all the other direction this evening, but would add that as an option on the menu that you could look at and say, that's great, or you could look at and say, I hate that. What were we thinking?
I mean, I, I think it would, I would appreciate if you put together a map where all communities of interest were kept whole. In, even if what we decide is that it's a terrible idea, I think it's important to see what that means. So we understand what we're actually trading off as we make trade offs. If I had to pick, what I think a community of interest that I, I see as being a community of interest that needs to be kept whole, it's the North Downtown, because I interact with it every day. And so I consider it part of my community of interest, even though I don't live over there, right? But, but I think it's important for us, before we make a decision, to see what those trade offs actually are, to see what it means to actually cut up communities of interest. And if it's possible to create some sort of overlay where it shows us where all those communities of interest are, I think it's, I'm a very visual learner, and I think it would be really useful for, for me. So that's my request. I, I give a plus one to Cardinal as is. If we could, you know, but my request would be that we see exactly how, how our city would look if those submitted communities of interest were completely kept whole.
I have that as a direction.
Thank you.
If I could just add, I do, the one community of interest, though, that wasn't submitted as such, but I happen to be in, is that one right around that you were just slicing in half. Right? Because I'm, you know, I'm, I know that area right around College Avenue, and that is definitely a neighborhood where people hang out a lot. So anyway, I'm just saying that something to think about. So the, if, if we do that, somebody might have to submit that as a community of interest, too, because not all of the communities can be handled. The other thing I'd say is there's a big difference between, you know, Fourth Street's a major divider, First Street is a railroad kind of thing. So we, we're probably not going to get perfection across all of those things. But anyway, let's go, but your idea to have a community of interest overlay and see if we can handle it is good. I think Cardinal has a lot of it, but not, it's not.
It's pretty damn close, but I would like to see.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. So that's, so we've got, yours is that community of interest overlay map you want to see. Okay. And then, I spare a banana.
Okay. Gets a little bit challenging to follow all these, these what ifs. So let me just say, I like Cardinal as well. I think it's pretty close to the initial goal we all kind of agreed to at some level is balance. You're going back to that one?
I'm loading that one up, yes.
And I guess what I was gonna just suggest is the change that you reversed back out where we tried to keep, tried to move from the Fourth Street, once you get there, it'll be easier for me to speak. Okay, we just talked about the change that you undid, where changed the boundary between one and three from Fourth Street to First Street. And the attendant. And the attendant. Pluses and minuses with that. If you if to get back to the population balance, it was a concern with that one, could you again move back from the Portola boundary between one and two? Back to Livermore Ave. And then at the same time, make a change. And move the. Three, four boundary from Robertson Park or the Arroyo there up to College with those. Three changes sort of address.
So the direction there was to potentially move, and I can explore it, is District Four. Moving to College Avenue.
Right.
District One going to Livermore.
Yep.
And then it's District Three would be going to First. Are those the three changes?
Yeah, the one that we just looked at, the council member kick, I thought was suggesting.
I just wanted to verify if it was First or Railroad, which was the first, which though. Uh, I can make those changes quickly and tell you where you land if you want to bear with me.
Sure. And I, again, I I would like to see that one, but if you do it quickly now, fine, otherwise I live with. Well, I'll let you do it.
Yep. The ones that require me to look off at other sources of information are the ones that are a little slower to put together. So I'm just going to commit all three of those changes so you can see the net effect, which is I think what you were getting at.
Correct, yep.
So we're moving that area into District Four, and you're going to see your numbers change as we go along here.
Hmm, okay. I didn't expect four to go so high.
And then District One. Now, I will note on the prior map that is, I think, related to this. Discussion is, if you recall, District Three was a little too big. That was going all the way to Railroad. And I'd have to look at how much population that may be an option is only to go up to First Street instead of Railroad. That wouldn't put that entire community of interest map. Submission together would but would put the bulk together. Uh, but you can see the changes here where fundamentally the challenge is that two is under and four is over. So you'd have to get population two to. Four in a rotation either through one or through three.
Okay, all right. I I I thought that would look better than it did. Then allow us what one final question is. Saint Michael's School and Saint Michael's Church both. In District One now, from the map I'm looking at. Which isn't yours. I just, I didn't know if you cut those two up. Those should probably be together. Uh, the school, which are on different sides of the street.
I restoring back the map, so it's just loading that back up and then I can look at that question.
Vice Mayor Mike. Yeah, but second, are you, are are, did you want to save or keep that one map or you?
No, I I don't think so. I I didn't, didn't, didn't look.
And I did save it. Uh, so Saint Michael's, uh, I will admit, I don't know where it is off top of my head, so you might have to point me.
You'd need to go to Church Street and. Maple, let's see, let me look.
It's just west of Livermore High School.
Yeah, it's.
On Maple.
Yeah, on Maple.
Just north of Livermore High.
You might need to zoom in a little bit.
So there's Livermore High School, and this is first right now, Saint Michael's Church is in District One.
Okay, I have a my, the, okay, that's fine.
There's the church there.
And I, the school is, if the church is in, then the school should be in, I think. Okay. I just thought they shouldn't be split up, and I I was worried that they were. I I'm done. Thank you. And I I think Card, I I'm, I'm pretty pleased with Cardinal, and I think. Um, I would not suggest a different map. Thank you.
Under both red Cardinal, the dividing line, there's Church Street and Fourth Street.
Yeah, I think that's okay. Just that the the church and the school are on different blocks, and I wanted to make sure we captured them both together. That's all I had. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
Um. So I'm sort of moving in the red direction as well, as I think I was the one who eventually said it a little ahead of time. Um, I I I'm not sure about the, all of the changes there. Um, I do think it balances the communities of interest with the. Uh, with the deviation, um, you know, pretty well. Um, had something else I was going to say with that, uh. But I think a lot of stuff has already been said. Um. So I'm just kind of blithering while I'm trying to remember, recall what the last thing I I said, oh, I know what it was. It's actually, I like red. I do not like Cardinal. I believe that we should call this Scarlet instead or Crimson. That's really all I have to say because I really, you know, I think that we're moving in the in a direction that's that's quite good. So. I'll just comment on the colors.
Okay. Uh. So you like the map, just change the name. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Berkeley people here, come on.
Okay, uh, councilmember uh. Carly.
Yeah, I liked red. Uh, I don't like Cardinal. Whether it's called Scarlet or Crimson or Cardinal. Cause I don't understand the logic. Of moving those two schools into one. It almost gives. It gives me the impression that you think those schools only draw from the West. They also draw from the people that live to the East. So I I think it's unnecessary to move. To move that line. I think uh. That boundary makes the the original boundary for red. To me, makes a lot more sense. Than the uh boundary around Lawrence and. And Junction now. So that's my comments.
So if if, just so I can make sure I understand it, you're going, uh, if that one one section, what you're saying is. Cardinal, you would get back to, because we made some other changes in Cardinal, but you you would take. Cardinal and then just put that boundary around Junction Avenue's school on Junction Avenue.
Yeah, the way it was on red, yeah, the way he had it to begin with.
Ri- right, but the other difference was we're pulling the trailer park into District Three.
Yeah, I know. I was only talking about the two schools.
Yeah, I know, I know. But what I'm saying is rather than go back to red. Modifying Cardinal with um.
Okay.
That's all.
Yep, okay. I just think it's unnecessary to move those two schools the way.
Good, so that's a, that's your map.
Okay.
So I wanted. So to summarize, if I've heard this correctly, that we're basically looking at three variants of the red plan. Including the red, well, there's the red plan itself, then three variants, the one is we've now.
No, I didn't hear anybody select the red planet, so.
I ap- I apologize. So three variants of the red plan. One of which we're now moved on to Crimson, which is what is currently shown on the screen. One would be a, what we'll probably call Scarlet, which is not making the changes to the red plan that were shown in this area along Junction. And instead keeping the red planet and only shifting the area around the trailer park. And then three, the plan that I've not yet drawn, which is to look at taking the red plan as a foundation, but trying to. More closely conform to the maps that were submitted as community of interest testimony. Is that an accurate summary?
Yes, now, I I just wanted to, we did a name change. So you had Cardinals. It got a new name now?
Uh, it's your plan, so we can call it whatever you like, sir.
No, no, I thought uh Councilmember Monroe wanted to change the name on it. I I just.
I'm really fine with it being your cha- it's your plan, you get to name it.
No, it is fine. Just I don't want to get myself confused, so just leave it whatever name it was. So we, it was. It was dubbed Cardinals, so leave it be.
Okay.
Then, okay, so we have. Uh. We're now really into the fine tooth. I think we're done. For ten, on this discussion tonight, you haven't, uh. Unless anybody else wants to pick another map or modify, we've completed the process. We've um. Uh, refined the maps, how we're thinking. Uh, and we're we're good to go for the next meeting, and we have a total. How many total maps do we have? Five?
So you will have seventeen public plans, because nothing goes off the menu. You'll have the four previous plans, and you'll have three revised plans for the next uh meeting.
Uh, we had the uh. Three revised plans. Does that include the o- overlay with the submitted uh? Communities of interest?
So correct. Those three revised plans would be the Cardinal Plan, which again is on screen. Uh, the version that only moves the trailer park and doesn't make any additional changes to the red plan. And then the one that looks at those communities of interest submissions. And I may have one clarifying question for Councilmember Kick, if that's uh appropriate. Uh, on that overlay plan, if, and I don't know this is the case, if. I can. If there isn't a, if there is in fact an overlap between that South Livermore and that North Livermore plan, I think I heard. The direction was that that North Livermore is the one that was more important to keep whole and and related to that if. It ends up that I can't include all of the area to rear side av- or Railroad Avenue only to First Street. Is that unacceptable as I just kind of play with? Getting this to fit?
Yeah, I mean, based on. My experience in the community, the North Livermore, the North Downtown piece is what I think should be kept whole. Secondly, would be the. What is it called? They called it South Downtown. And then thirdly, those other communities of interest. I think all the communities of interest. You know, in a, in an ideal world would be kept whole, but if I had to make a choice of keeping. Um, out of North Downtown and South Downtown, my my preference would be to keep that North Downtown whole. So thank you for that clarification.
Right, and it's uh, and just so we. Just make it clear, and I don't know where they drawing, you know, where the D marks were, but in my own. Experience, there's a uh. There is a difference between the different sides of Fourth Street. And most of the stuff on the east side of that area between four uh Fourth. And First is mostly commercial. You know, around L, the L East is mostly commercial in there, and it's the. West is more like uh north. Anyway, but it that's, I think we're going to get into a refined discussion of exactly where the boundary is in those communities of interest, but it's. It's going to be one of these subjective things where we get into it. And that's also true of what happens over in my own neighborhood around. College Avenue to the Arroyo and stuff is. You know, you have to have a feel for where you, where you live kind of stuff. So we'll have that. So I think we're done. For tonight on this topic. Is that? I have it right?
Yes, thank you very much. I have everything I need, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And and I think this will set us up. For a a a even more robust discussion. And more refined on the final. So I think there's uh been a lot of engagement. I think you've seen. Uh, that we've all spent time thinking about these maps. Uh, and it's, I really want to say I appreciate all all the people that submitted the maps. I put them all out, print, got them all printed out, or I didn't print them, but the uh. City Clerk was kind enough, spread them all out on my dining room table and spent a lot of time thinking about them. And trying to, trying to figure it out. So uh. I, you know, we s- we did this pretty carefully the first time, and I'll just say that uh I was, we're doing this even more carefully. Than that this time. And so I want to thank you uh for all the uh preparation. I want to thank every member of the public. For having uh submitted what they did. And I I think we'll uh, we're well positioned now to have a a. A good outcome in the final meeting. And as I said. None of the maps are perfect. And many of them will satisfy the needs, and we're just going to have to look for balance. So, thank you. Uh, so now, um. What do we got? Where do we go next here? We've got to now go back to. Uh. I think what will, I'm looking at the time. I think what we normally break around nine. We'll get uh item three and item four. I think, and then we can um, then we'll have a a break, and then we can finish off the meeting somewhere in there, maybe just item three. We'll see. Anyway, if uh. We go to item three, the 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 confirmation of advisory body appointments. To the Beautification Committee, Human Service Commission, and Livermore Area Youth Advisory uh Commission. And, oh, I got the information here. Um, well, actually, City Clerk, could you? Sort of give us a report of all the appointments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Applicants for vacancies on Livermore's advisory bodies are interviewed by a two-member subcommittee of the City Council. Before being recommended for appointment by the full City Council. On February second, the subcommittee interviewed applicants for vacancies on the Beautification Committee, Human Services Commission. And the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, and have submitted their recommendation for City Council consideration and appointment. Tonight, the subcommittee recommends the City Council confirm the following advisory body appointments and direct the city clerk to schedule individual meetings with the new members to administer the oath of office. For the Beautification Committee. Sue Taretha Ralapali to a term ending June first, twenty twenty-three. For the Human Services Commission, Kathleen Lapointe Cola to a term ending November first, twenty twenty-six. And A.J. Aurora to a term ending November first, twenty twenty-three. And for the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, Nihah Sabharwala, sorry, Sabharwall. To a term ending September first, twenty twenty-three. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay, I think uh. I don't know if we have any questions. I don't think we do public compo- do we do public comment on this item?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay, so I think we have to have a motion to approve all of those.
I'll move approval.
I'll second. And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Carly.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick. Councilmember. Hi, am I unmuted? Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Banana.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Yes. Okay, so we've, and congratulations to all of you that have been selected, and again, I want to express my appreciation. For all those that contribute across all our advisory bodies and to the uh council subcommittee that did the interviewing. And it's a very important um. Way that with the the city is is run. And helped to be run through all of the people who volunteer, so really appreciate it. So at this point, uh. Next item up is Citizens Forum. And um. If the City Clerk, could you explain the process for participating in tonight's Citizens Forum, please?
Yes, Mayor. The City Council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the City Council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during Citizens Forum to address the City Council on any item of interest that is within the so- the City Council's subject matter jurisdiction. Two, for agendized items, the public can address the City Council on each item of business. It considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the City Council, and the City Council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address a speaker's comments when a City Council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person, per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand. Instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes or six minutes, if you're using interpretation services, will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we typically allow um thirty minutes. Of up to that for the first part, and then anything that goes beyond that will continue at the end of, towards the end of the meeting. But we're starting this at uh. Ten to nine, so we'll make it nine twenty that will, if we have need to, will. You know, continue after that. So uh could we um. Uh, start with the first person, please?
Yes, Mayor, the first request to speak is from Alan Marling, followed by Jackie Coda. Alan Marling, please unmute yourself.
Mayor and councilmembers, Save Livermore Downtown wasted everyone's time and money. Their lawsuit against affordable housing was denied this month by Superior Court Judge Frank Roche, who said their quote. Sequel arguments are almost utterly without merit, and this is not a close case, end quote. Though the special interest group printed many ads claiming ground toxicity. Only their obstructionism toward affordable housing during a housing crisis proved to be toxic. This special interest group didn't just spend some of our residents' money in this spurious lawsuit. They wasted over five hundred thousand dollars of it. They had to post that much in a bond assessed by Judge. They wasted over $500,000 of it. They had to post that much in a bond assessed by Judge Frank Roche after he ruled their lawsuit wasn't bad faith or merely, quote, "for the purpose of delaying or thwarting low-income housing," end quote. At that point, they should have dropped the suit. Instead, they doubled down, extracting more funds from the community over the holidays with Scrooge-worthy ads. Livermore has been impoverished in more ways than one. And let's be clear who's responsible. Save Livermore Downtown was spearheaded by Joan Sepla, owner of The Independent, and Jean King, who together are board members of Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center, which manages the Bankhead Theater. If you've read the news, you may have heard of the mountainside, which tried to declare its whole town mountain lion habitat to block affordable housing. The Cougar Town Defense is more amusing compared to what's happening in Livermore. The statements made by the SLD Special Interest Group are no less odious and arguably more deceptive. At least in mountainside, they didn't pretend to be in favor of affordable housing while doing everything in their power to block it. If only there were but one special interest group led by Joan Sepla and Jean King. They also advocated for Save North Livermore, which is still litigating against a solar farm during a climate emergency. And this year, they opposed infrastructure needed for the downtown hotel, which is supported by the majority of Livermore voters, entire city council, and the Chamber of Commerce. How could Joan Sepla and Jean King support so many toxic positions? Do they only care about making their lawyer friends rich? At best, they have isolated themselves in an echo chamber located in the last century. I urge them to stop attempting to control a city they no longer understand, or they risk being remembered as utterly without merit.
The next speaker is Jackie Coda. Jackie Coda, please unmute yourself.
That was a really interesting comment by Alan, and actually, there's several groups that are actually against the downtown housing. And it's not that people are against affordable housing in this town. It's just the placement of more downtown housing that will ruin the ambiance of the downtown. So we will continue to fight it because it was a poor decision made by very, very poor leaders in this city. So just to let you know, we will continue our fight because there is toxicity in there, in the ground, just like the Growth Brothers car dealership lot had to pay money to remove the toxicity as well if there was going to be any building on that land, and it seeped over into across the street from the former, or from the gas station. So don't tell me that there's no toxicity there. Not only that, but I just want to say, you know, I've been gone for a while because we've had some family issues that we've had to deal with. But, you know, coming back to California, you know, we're still here watching the dysfunction and hypocrisy of the Democrats of the state. We see Gavin Newsom and Garcetti at the NFC Championships without masks, but then the very next day, they decide, since they got caught red-handed, that they're going to remove the mask mandates for vaccinated people only, but they're still going to muzzle the children. When is this state going to be tired with the hypocrisy from Democrats? We are so sick and tired of living under this tyrannical baloney. We've got leaders that are still maintaining a state of emergency. The Democrats in our state are maintaining a state of emergency. Why? Why does our assembly member say? So that they can continue to get federal money. That's called fraud. And is our city still under an emergency consideration? Two weeks to flatten the curve, I mean, two years. I meant, it meant when we hit 80% vax, it meant 90% vax. 90% vax plus two boosters, I mean, kids too. It meant repeating steps one, two through six. I mean, eliminating the com cold, it meant, oh, wait, it's a dictatorship is what it is, and we are tired of it. Thank God we've got the truckers that are going to bring this country back to being America. We are so sick and tired of poor leadership, and we are done with all you leaders who have been supporting this fraud, this lie, this abuse, and we will make sure every single one of them is voted out in the next election.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
I'm going to close the public comment. We'll take a break until 9:05. Will TV 30 counters back in?
Mayor, I believe so. TV 30, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. We'll get started in a moment. Yep. Nine to five, and in five, four, three, two, one, cue.
Okay, thank you. We're returning from our 10-minute break. It's 9:05, and we're at the Livermore City Council meeting, and we're on now to agenda item 5.0, the consent calendar. Now, these, our items are considered routine in nature and act upon it by the city council with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public input must use the raise hand feature during the public comment period to comment on any of the consent calendar items. Would anyone on the council wish to poll any item for discussion? Okay, I don't see that. So open public comment on the consent calendar. Do we have anybody who wishes to address any item on the consent calendar?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment on the consent calendar. I don't think there are any, any council comments. If not, how about a motion? Okay, Councilmember Monroe?
I get my hand up quickly. I saw move that we accept the consent calendar. I mean, yeah, the consent items.
Second?
Okay. Seconded by Vice Mayor Nono. So we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carley?
Aye.
Councilmember Kake?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. Okay, consent calendar passes unanimously. We've already covered 6.1, it's at the front of the agenda. So now we're on to item 6.2, hearing to introduce an ordinance amending and restating titled 13, Chapter 13.6, Water Conservation, and Chapter 13.27, mandatory drought conservation measures to prohibit wasteful water practices. Can we have a staff presentation, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. This is Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager. And here to present this item this evening is Anthony Smith, a management analyst in the Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Like Christine mentioned, this is Anthony Smith, a management analyst in the Water Resources Division of the Public Works Department. Tonight, staff is asking the council to hold a public hearing for an ordinance that amends and restates Livermore Municipal Code Chapters 13.26 and 13.27 regarding water conservation measures. This proposed ordinance brings the municipal code into alignment with the Water Shortage Contingency Plan that was adopted by the council on June 14th, 2021. In order to codify these changes introduced in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, the proposed ordinance adds two additional water storage, water shortage stages for compliance with state regulations, adjusts some existing conservation measures, and clarifies some additional language. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available for questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, before we go to the council, is there anybody from the public that wishes to address us on this item?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, close the public hearing on this one. And now, back to the council. Any questions, comments from the council? A motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe?
So second?
Okay, moved and seconded. Any no further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Carley?
Aye.
Councilmember Kake?
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Banano?
Aye.
Mayor Warner?
Aye. The motion passes unanimously for 6.2. We're now on to 7.1, Oral Report from the Director of Emergency Services Regarding the COVID-19 Emergency. Oral Report from the Director of Emergency Services Regarding the COVID nineteen Emergency. We have the staff presentation, please.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Again, this is Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager. And I am here to give the report on behalf of Mark Roberts, our Director of Emergency Services, regarding that COVID emergency. Next slide, please. So the first slide here is an update since we last met at the end of January, your last council meeting in January. Our data here, as you can see, from the county is broken up into three areas. The first is testing. Our county's seven day percentage of positive tests for February as of February twelfth was five point three percent, and that is down from January twenty first, when it was around seventeen percent. Hospitalizations are also trending down with the county's seven day average of new COVID admissions and confirmed diagnosis on February twelfth was sixty five, and that is down from January twenty first, when it was one hundred fifteen. And then our case rates, our data is a little bit older as the county takes a little bit more time to get that data accurate. There's just a lot of it coming in, and they've been typically trending about a week behind with the data. So you can see these dates are a little bit older, but still a good comparison nonetheless. Our Livermore seven day average of daily new cases per one hundred thousand as of February fifth was fifty eight, and that compares to January twenty first, when it was one hundred sixty eight. And that is similar to the county's seven day average of cases per one hundred thousand. As of February fifth, it was fifty three, and January twenty first, one hundred seventy four. Next slide, please. Another update since we last met. Just yesterday, as a matter of fact, we held a vaccine clinic at the Sunday Farmer's Market once again with our partner, our county partner in this. And we had a very successful effort. Once again, we administered one hundred three doses of Pfizer to the twelve and over population and sixty seven of the pediatric vaccine. And again, the Alameda County Vaccine Incentive Gift Card Program was utilized. We'd like to thank our partners in this. We'll continue to partner with them on additional clinics. I don't have any dates for you at this time, but stay tuned. I know that they will be out there again as soon as we can get them. And thank you to all the partners, I mean, all the volunteers on the city and our partner agencies. It takes a lot of volunteers to make this work, and it's been working really successfully. So we're happy to report that. And on the next slide, another update is with respect to the mask mandate. I did want to note that Alameda County has issued a press release that will align their mask mandate requirements with the state of California, which is to lift the universal mask requirements for vaccinated persons in most indoor public settings beginning tomorrow. I mean, I'm sorry, February sixteenth, which is the day after tomorrow. And unvaccinated people over the age of two must continue to mask in all indoor public settings. And indoor masking will still be required for anyone regardless of vaccination status in some certain areas such as public transportation, healthcare settings, convivial care, homeless shelters, long term care facilities, and in K through twelve schools and childcare settings. Again, the county urges folks to rec, strongly recommends that folks continue to wear masks indoor, in indoor settings, as they are an effective tool in preventing the spread of the virus. And I will just say that we continue to actively communicate with the county and will be reporting any changes in this if or when they come through. But as of right now, that's what's happening on February sixteenth. Next slide, please. Our local testing sites. I did want to report that we are continuing to host the mobile testing bus at Robert Livermore Community Center, and that is in the parking lot that's located off of Loyola Way. They started on January twenty eighth, operating seven to seven every Friday. They take a couple of breaks for lunch in there. I believe that's around the eleven to noon hour and the four to five hour. But other than that, they are there for testing. Appointments are encouraged but not required. And so far, on the three Fridays they've operated, they've done a total of two hundred and fifty four tests. Ninety four of those have been positive and one hundred and sixty eight negative. Alameda County continues to offer free testing at Access Community Health, Stanford Healthcare and Valley Care offer testing as well at their location on Stanley Boulevard. And Los Pacitas College continues to host City Health Urgent Care as a testing location in their parking lot, parking lot P, to be specific. And also, as many of you are aware, there are also sites at local pharmacies like CVS and other various locations throughout the city. And you can go to the county's website where they can direct you to a testing facility if none of these work for you. Okay, our next slide. This slide presents vaccination data. And the trends are moving slowly upwards as if you're playing along and counting from our last meeting. The numbers are very similar but going up. So Livermore's population of fully vaccinated is at seventy seven percent, with the county being at eighty two point two percent. And then the population with vaccination and a booster dose for Livermore is fifty six point eight percent, and the county at fifty nine point two percent. And I did want to note on this slide, you can see there are standing vaccination clinics at Stanford Valley Care and your local pharmacies. And please, for any of those interested, we do update our website and we do push out on social media when we partner and have vaccine clinics in the area, including like the one that we had yesterday at the farmer's market. All right, and on the next slide, council was interested in seeing us include a slide on vaccination status and case rates. So this is taken from the Alameda County Dashboard website as of today, which is reporting data again through about February fifth. So a little bit behind today's date, but still this slide does show the story. The seven day average daily rate among unvaccinated population is that yellow line on the chart, and the black represents the seven day average among the total population, with the lighter blue color, the last line there, being the seven day average rate among fully vaccinated population. Okay, and the next slide is the seven day rolling average of daily new COVID cases per one hundred thousand population. And this slide does provide the data from January fifth to February fifth, the data I reported earlier on in the presentation. And as you can see, our peak of Omicron does appear to be trending downward. Again, the data only goes through February fifth, but that, both the county and the city of Livermore's data is trending in the same direction and mirroring each other quite closely, actually. So January tenth, Livermore's seven day rolling case rate was one ninety six, and February fifth is down to fifty seven point six. Okay, and our last slide here is that hospitalization slide we've shown the last few presentations. Again, this is taken from the county dashboard, and it shows the total hospitalizations in Alameda County. And again, the blue line is total hospitalized, and the yellow line underneath is hospitalized in ICU. The bottom axis shows January twenty twenty two is the last date, but that's just, I'm not sure exactly why, but February should be on there. If you were to hover over the very last data point there on that graph, that would also be February fifth, just like the other data that I've presented this evening. And that concludes the report this evening, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll open the public comment on this item. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us?
Yes, Mayor, there are two requests to speak. The first is from Jackie Cota, followed by Kyoko Takayama. Jackie Cota, please unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you. My questions, I have a couple of questions, actually. With regard to the information that you gave, we all know that vaccinated versus unvaccinated is, the data is totally skewed because you are considered unvaccinated after fourteen days of, during the fourteen day period after you get the shot, you're still considered unvaccinated. So the numbers are totally skewed. But what I'd like to know is, you know, you talk about cases. Well, cases absolutely mean nothing. I mean, we had eighty thousand people die between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen from the flu. And then, oh, lo and behold, COVID just got rid of the flu. So how did that, how did that happen? You know, this is, the fact that we're even continuing this charade is absolutely asinine. There, COVID is over. COVID is not deadly. My question is, is I want to know, how many deaths have we had in hospital from COVID and only COVID in the last two months? I'd like to know that. And number two, Ms. Weber, you made a comment, and I'm sure this has probably come from Dr. Mengele, but you made a comment that masks work and that they, to prevent the spread. However, there's no data that actually proves that. Actually, there's three studies that actually prove against that that were specifically tested on COVID. So with regard to that comment that you'd make, I'd like to know the data and the backup that you have to prove that claim. And second of all, the fact that, or lastly, I'd like to just say, you know, the fact that you guys are still pushing this vaccine, quote unquote vaccine, this genetic experimental injections, is absolutely ridiculous. COVID is over, and you're still shooting people with poison? Yeah, and that's right. I said poison. Because guess what? I just spent the last month and a half at Scottsdale Trauma Center because my father, after his booster, had a seizure, actually a stroke with a blood clot, which is exactly what I told you would happen. And guess what? He coded twice. He was in the hospital for two months. Now he's in major rehab. So anybody who's gotten these shots, this is your future. There have been one hundred and eight soccer players who've dropped dead from these shots. Four hundred athletes dropped dead because their hearts are giving out on them. So guess what? You people who are relying on poison that has had no safety testing done whatsoever. In fact, Pfizer and Moderna are trying to hide the data from us. You people that believe this bullshit still is absolutely pathetic. You are the problem. It's time to end this so-called emergency, but the Democrats in California are, got their heads so far up their asses that they can't even see straight. It's time for this to be over.
Next speaker is Kyoko Takayama. Kyoko, please unmute yourself.
I would just like to interject. It'd be appropriate to use better language as people comment. So go ahead, next speaker.
Hi, I don't know how to follow that one. I believe in vaccines. I believe in masking. And I do appreciate everything the city has been doing. And I have been promoting vaccination in Livermore since last August. So wow. Anyhow, I'm glad Alameda County, as well as Livermore, vaccination rates are going up. However, when you actually look into the census tract map, we still have less than seventy percent vaccination rates, census tract, seven of them. And I would like you to continue offering vaccine clinics. Even though appointments are more readily available, just making appointments could be somebody else for certain populations. So we do appreciate vaccine clinics working, accepted, and nobody is turned down. If possible, I would like you to have all this information mailed to every single houses in the next newsletter. So even though you do not have access to the internet, you will get information on the vaccination and testing and so forth. More testing sites are coming in. I believe there is another one on Murriera Blue Board. It's kind of weird, just behind the Stanford Valley Care, but that is also available. I just read that. And the school board testing site information is amazingly up to date. So I would like to recommend people to check that one out. Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Ellen Marley. Please unmute yourself.
Hello again. Science is real. Masks help. Vaccines save lives. And I encourage the city to continue to advocate to get, for people to get their booster shots. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. A close public comment on seven dot one. Council, have any questions, comments? Councilmember Kake.
I, um, I would like to ask when our next newsletter is coming out. I appreciate Kyoko's suggestion on that. Also, you can't believe in science. It's not a belief. You can either understand the scientific method or you don't understand it, but it's not a belief that people hold. And I just can't let that keep being said here. So if you could let me know when our next newsletter comes out. And then if it has to be a Matters Initiated, I could do that later. But I don't even know, is it happening within the next couple of months? Or is it, what's the current timeline?
Absolutely. Councilmember Kake, this is Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager. And yes, our next newsletter is actually in the works. I don't have the exact publication date, but it will definitely be within the next month, maybe two at the latest. I can check them out and let you know. But Kyoko's suggestion was a good one. So we will make a note of that somewhere in the newsletter of some locations.
Do I need to make that a Matters Initiated, or is this conversation enough?
I think that's, that's enough. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. I'll move on to seven dot two. The final report on the Livermore Police Department Traffic Stop and Arrest Data Project as part of the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. Can we have the staff presentation, please?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Once again, it's Christine Martin, your Assistant City Manager. And before I introduce our staff person for this item, I did want to provide just a brief bit of background. As you will recall, in the summer of twenty twenty, following the murder of George Floyd in Minneapolis, the City Council authorized the formation of the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. The Subcommittee included two council members and a community working group. After hearing from the community, the council directed the scope of the Subcommittee to not only include an examination of the police department's use of force policies and practices for, and practices for incidences of structural discrimination and racism, but to more broadly examine areas of, including housing, transportation, youth, community, and community representation and culture. The working group members of the Subcommittee self-selected into four subgroups on those topics that I just mentioned. And one of those subgroups, Subgroup B, was focused on the policing and human services aspect. This group identified a review of the police department's stop and arrest data as an objective. The review of the data was not complete before the Subcommittee sunset last June. And as a part of the acceptance of the Subcommittee's final recommendations, the council asked to receive a final report of the stop and arrest data. That is what is before you this evening. And with that, I would like to introduce Lieutenant John Reynolds, who will give the staff presentation for this agenda item.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is Lieutenant Reynolds from the Police Department. And the purpose for tonight is to report back on the traffic stop and arrest data project, which was one of the working group's objectives. Through a screening process, two consultants from the University of Texas San Antonio Department of Criminology and Criminal Justice were hired to independently analyze the police department's traffic stop and arrest data and provide recommendations as needed. On March twenty fifth of twenty twenty one, Doctors Tiller and Smith were introduced to the working group in which they explained their background, methodologies for conducting. in which they explained their background, methodologies for conducting stop data research for police departments, and the scope of this project. On October twenty first of two thousand twenty one, Doctors Tiller and Smith presented an update to the working group on their identified deliverables and some initial findings with their research. And then lastly, in December of two thousand twenty one, Doctors Tiller and Smith completed their analysis of the police department's data and submitted a written final report. And tonight, Doctor Tiller is in attendance and will report back on the findings of this project. So Doctor Tiller, welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. And I will pull up your presentation, and you are free to proceed when you are ready.
Great, thank you, Lieutenant. Can everybody hear me okay? I trust. Lieutenant, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to present this final report to you. As, as mentioned, I'm Doctor Rob Tiller. I'm a professor of criminology and criminal justice at University of Texas, San Antonio, here on behalf of my colleague Mike Smith, who couldn't be with us this evening. We can go to the next slide. So as Lieutenant outlined, this is just sort of a background overview of our project. So you see the scope at the top, which was to examine the contacts with the public during traffic stops of the Livermore Police Department to better understand the racial and ethnic composition of those encounters and, and their outcomes, in particular, the situations of arrest. And the deliverables that Lieutenant already outlined there are listed. In particular, I'll point your attention to number three and number four, which is what we'll talk about tonight. Part one of this analysis looked at the traffic stop, traffic stops of the Livermore Police Department and compared against appropriate benchmarks, which I'll talk about in a second. And then the second part was a focus on the outcome of identifying factors that would have been potentially associated with the likelihood of an arrest of a citizen. Next slide, please. So let's start with just the first part, which is thinking about traffic stops. And the key to think about here is, is we want to identify the percentage of traffic stops that involved particular different racial groups that were initiated by Livermore Police Department officers. And we need to then compare that against some expected rate of those, of those stops. Unfortunately, the, the situation is, and this is true in any jurisdiction, is that we don't have the information necessary to know when an officer could have made a stop but didn't. And so that creates a situation where we need to understand and develop an assessment or a benchmark that measures the risk of being stopped for civilian groups. And a good benchmark reflects the stopping risks, assuming no bias, by asking questions like when, where they drive, or measuring where they drive, when they drive, how they drive, and so forth. And so that benchmark then becomes the comparison against which the, the, the data from the police department is compared. In this particular study, next slide, please. We used two different benchmarks as, as comparison points against which we compared the Livermore traffic stop data, which I'll show you the results of in a moment. First of all, we did, we, we used a veil of darkness benchmark. And in short, what that means is that we took all the traffic stops that occurred during the time period in the afternoon and into early evening during the course of a year, where sometimes it's daytime and sometimes it's nighttime, as, as the, as the time, as the sun sets at different points in time. And we compared those to each other, with the idea being that if there was some potential bias being demonstrated by officers, you would see that in situations where, with higher rates of stops during the daytime of, of particular groups in comparison to nighttime, when it's more difficult to identify the, the race and ethnicity of the drivers. So that's one benchmark that I'll, I'll speak to and show some results from in a minute. The second benchmark we used was by comparing the Livermore traffic stop data to an external data set from the state of California that collects information on traffic crashes across the city of Livermore. And sort of in two different categories. One is not at fault. So when drivers are involved in accidents that, that are not their fault, and that operates as sort of a measure of who is driving on the road and the racial and ethnic composition of that, of that group. And then secondly, those were at, who are at fault for causing a crash, or deemed to have been at fault for, for causing a crash. And those are an estimate of sort of those who might be at a higher risk of stop because they were violating the law. Next slide, please. I want to just take one, one quick detour and just note the idea of census, census population as a benchmark. This is a common, commonly used benchmark in sort of media reports and, and common conversation. But it is, it is not an ideal, and in fact, an inappropriate benchmark to use in a scientific study of this form. And, and the main reason for that is outlined there, which is that the residential census population, as measured by, you know, by our census, assumes, makes an assumption that there is an equal level of risk of every individual living in the city of being stopped by the police. And that assumption is just largely untenable for a couple of basic reasons, among others. Number one, the measure of population doesn't actually assess any level of risk because different individuals within our communities drive in different ways. They drive more frequently, they drive in different, with different manners, which heighten their likelihood of being stopped, et cetera. And the other part, the other reason why the census population is not a good benchmark is that it also assumes that the only people driving in a particular community actually live in that community. And that's also quite, you know, unrealistic. And, and many of us, probably many of you even, on a daily or weekly basis, travel into other jurisdictions. And so if just measuring people who live in a particular community, that doesn't give us a true sense of who's actually driving on the road and potentially at risk of being stopped. So those two factors, among others, as I mentioned, leave, leave this as a, as an inappropriate benchmark and largely has been removed from use among the scientific community when trying to understand the actions of, of law enforcement agencies. Okay, next slide, please. So the second part of the analysis looks at arrest. So once a stop, once an encounter between an officer and a citizen has been initiated, what we wanted to do here is understand what are the, the factors or the characteristics of a particular encounter that align with the likelihood of an arrest. And so we use a couple of different techniques to get at that, including different descriptive statistics. And we'll show some of those quickly for you as well, as well as more complicated inferential statistics, which allow us to identify and flag particular characteristics or factors that are associated with the likelihood of an arrest occurring, and including taking into account the race and ethnicity of the civilian involved. And I will just point out quickly that there's, there's a variety of different sort of findings on that particular point of the relationship between non-white groups and arrest. And certainly, there's some research that suggests that there is a higher rate of arrests for non-white groups, while there's other studies that, that do not find a consistent effect there, a relationship there. What is consistently found is that generally male citizens or civilians are, are found to be arrested at higher rates compared to females. So those are just some, some context from other studies to, to think about when we think about your particular findings in Livermore. Next slide, please. So the data we used, the data was, that we examined was Livermore Police Department activity between January first, two thousand nineteen, and April thirtieth of two thousand twenty one. The first bullet point there talks about the traffic stops that were analyzed. And the second bullet point talks about the arrests that were analyzed. Just a couple of quick differences, just to show the traffic stop data, there was a little over twenty-two thousand traffic stops or incidents that officers initiated. So these are not, none of these include nine-one-one calls or calls by civilians to the police. These are officer-initiated contacts. We're gonna, I'll show you the results of the analysis on the benchmark number one, the veil of darkness, and also benchmark number two. And I'll point out that when you, when we get to that, you'll see that the results are presented as disproportionality indices and ratios. And the important thing to note there is that if, if you see a value of one point zero, and I'll point this out again when we look at the tables, that indicates that there's no difference in effect between the group of interest and the benchmark. And so we'll, we'll look to see that in the results later on. And then, as I mentioned, the second part will be an analysis of the arrests. And here we use multivariate models, which basically, in effect, allow you to simultaneously consider all of these different potential factors that are associated with arrest and identify those that are consistently appearing in the data. Okay, so let's look at a couple of results, and then we can take any questions you might have. So this is the results of the first benchmark. That first column, traffic stop percentage in, in the white, that shows you the data from the Livermore Police Department and the percentage by racial and ethnic group of their stops. So forty-four point two percent of all stops during the time period that we had dated to look at involved white drivers, ten point three percent of those stops were black drivers, twenty-eight point one percent were Hispanic drivers, and so forth and so on. The next two columns on the right engage that veil of darkness analysis that I suggested. And so you can see a column that says daytime percent, and a column that says nighttime percent. And so that breaks apart the stops during those two different time periods, when it was daytime versus when it was nighttime. And you can see the comparison across each of those groups. For example, the whites during the daytime comprised forty-four and a half percent of those stops. At night, it was forty-three point eight percent. And each of those are compared statistically, and as you can see, as the red box indicates, all of those comparisons, including for black drivers and also for Hispanic drivers and Asian drivers as well, were all non-significant. And what that, in sort of plain term mean, terms, it means is that there's really no statistical difference between those groups in, in the daytime versus nighttime. So we see no pattern there of disparity in terms of stops of any of those groups. Next slide, please. There's a lot going on this slide, so I'll, I'll try and just focus in on the, on the red boxes. These, this is the second benchmark that I referenced, and this is the disproportionality indices and ratios I referenced before. And so what you're looking for here is any value that is one point zero or above. And I've, I've highlighted in the red box just a couple of, of situations where that is. One point zero, again, meaning that black drivers or Hispanic drivers or white drivers, their stopping rate matches what the benchmark expected, right? In this case, the at-fault or the not-at-fault crashes. And you can see a couple of just slightly elevated rates for, for black drivers, looking at the not, the at-fault and the not-at-fault. And then on the very far right, you can see that one point one under the not-at-fault DR, the disproportionality ratio. So in relation to white drivers, black drivers were just a tick above equal in terms of their likelihood of being stopped using this particular benchmark. Now, that, that, those numbers across all of these analyses here are miniscule in effect. And a one point one is, is, is as close as you can get to one point zero, which would be a complete equivalence. So that's the story there. Go to one more slide, please. So this is the descriptive statistics of the, for the arrests. And what I would just point your, your eyes to initially is that a little under two percent, one point eight percent of all encounters between initiated by officers and civilians resulted in an arrest over the time period that we looked at. And I won't go through all of the, the descriptive numbers here. These are all in, in the report, if you want to look at it. But just, this just gives you an idea of the breakdown, the composition of all those encounters. Let's go to the next slide, please. What I do want to just highlight here is, are the main results. And you can see on the left-hand side, there are Model One. And the big takeaway from this, the big, main, major finding is that there was no statistical difference between white and black civilians in their likelihood of arrest. And so what that means is that the product of this analysis, looking across two and a half years of data, demonstrated that whether it was a white civilian or a black civilian, there was no heightened or difference in their experience of arrest after considering all of the other things that we were, that were available for us to, to measure. And actually, interestingly, the second bullet point, for Hispanic and Asians and any individual who doesn't fit into those groups, into the other group, they were all less likely to be arrested compared to white civilians. Things that increase the likelihood of arrest, and this speaks back to what, what is commonly found in other places. Male civilians have a higher likelihood of being arrested, those under the age of twenty-four. If the encounter involved officers with a little less experience or assigned to patrol incidents during the daytime. So those are all things that heightened the likelihood of arrest. But again, no differences between whites and blacks in that regard. And on the right-hand side, we did some sub-analyses, just with a portion of the data that also included the violent crime rate in the area where the encounter occurred, which is an important consideration. And the number three there, I would just point your attention to, I think is an important one to highlight, that areas that had, the encounters that occurred in areas with higher levels of violent crime also experienced higher arrest rates, which is exactly what you would expect, that there, there might likely be the higher chance of arrest in, in an area that has higher crime. And next slide, please. So in sum, what does all this mean? In terms of the benchmark analysis for stops, the results from the two benchmarks indicated that there was no pattern of racial or ethnic disparity in the traffic stops experienced by non-white drivers. That's true in the veil of darkness analysis, and also true in the traffics, the traffic crash benchmark analysis, although there was some slight elevated rates for, for black drivers in that benchmark. But taken together, these two benchmarks do not show a consistent pattern of disparity in stops based on race or ethnicity. In other words, the, the Livermore Police Department engaged in traffic stops that largely occurred independent from the influence of civilian race or ethnicity. Next slide, please. And in terms of the arrest findings, a very similar story, right? The results of the arrest analysis do not reveal a pattern of racial disparity in police outcomes that disadvantages non-white civilians in the city of Livermore. And collectively, of course, then that led us to this conclusion that there's no clearly identifiable or concerning pattern of disparity in the encounters that occurred over the twenty-six-month period that we analyzed. So that's the highlight of our findings. If you would go to the last slide. I just will note that this was, this study was very much appreciated being involved with the city of Livermore and the Livermore Police Department and their cooperation, and that these findings and, and these conclusions reflect myself and Dr. Smith's professional opinions, and they're independent of anything that the city or the police department conveyed to us. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Before we go to questions from the council, I'll open the public comment, and then we'll come back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, there are two requests to speak. The first speaker is Jackie Cota, followed by Alan Marley. And Marley, big extra. Jackie Cota, please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much for this presentation, Mr. Tiller. It just goes once again to show the citizens of Livermore that there is no systemic racism in policing. And I hope that in the future, after this experience that we had, I have, was on the Equity and Inclusion Commission, I hope that in the future, that our leaders in the city don't just kowtow to emotions when people make a claim that they can't prove, and then turn around and spend money on doing something that the city doesn't need to have done. One thing that I want to say is that Ms. Weber made the comment, I believe it was Ms., no. I take that back. I can't remember who made the comment. Anyway, made the comment that George Floyd was murdered. George Floyd was not murdered. The autopsy reports show that he died of a fentanyl overdose. The fact that our city and our former mayor, who said that his reasoning for getting together this commission was because that our city wanted to remain white, rich, and old. Someone who actually has an attitude like that should never be in a leadership position. That is a direct result of why this commission was created, is because of propaganda and emotions that ran wild, accusations that were baseless, and we actually have now seen it for ourselves. Proven that our city is run by a very professional law enforcement force, and they should always be commended for a great job that they do, keeping our citizens safe and always acting professional in their job. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alan Marley, followed by Marilyn Bigstra. Alan Marley, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, based on this data, based on the data and my understanding of it, I think our police officers have to be commended, and I encourage them to continue doing their due diligence.
Last request to speak is from Marilyn J. Bigstra. Please unmute yourself.
I had to find it. I want to thank the police department and the city for conducting this study. It's very encouraging, and I've always supported our police department. It's very encouraging, and I've always supported our police department here. And but I do have one question. I'm a little confused as to how it's decided that an area has a higher crime rate. Is that because it has a higher number of arrests? So if it has a higher number of arrests, I mean, that seems kind of cyclic. So so that's that's the one area that I'm not too clear on in this report. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. Would like to ask the definition of a higher crime rate before we move come back to the council.
Yeah, of course. No, that's that's no problem. So generally, when we talk about crime rate, and certainly in this study as well, we talk about incidents that are reported to the police that are confirmed as a criminal activity. So that's separate and independent from an arrest when when an individual has been identified and there's enough legal evidence to to make an arrest of someone for that crime. So so those are two separate things. But but the crime rate here refers to, for example, you know, a robbery that that occurs that the police respond to and then account in their official reports as as an incident of crime.
Okay, thank you. Now come back to the council, the council member Kick.
Yeah, so I think what's important about this is that how science and data works, whether you're doing qualitative, quantitative, whatever it looks like, is that you always study it and then you make a conclusion. You don't just study things that are going to confirm your biases. So it's important that we continue to do this, and I'm glad that that we did this. But I would love if we could do a comparison, like I think it's important to benchmark, and we talk about benchmarking and a lot of other things when we look at ourselves as a city. Mr. Tillyer, am I pronouncing that correctly?
You are, yes.
Thank you. If you could maybe give us some benchmarks of is this unusual data in policing overall in the United States? Or if you can't speak to that as a whole, if you can speak to the cities that you have done research on?
Yeah, of course. No, I appreciate that. And so I've been I've been doing this close to twenty years, and my research partner probably twenty-five years. And so we've worked with a number of agencies, a number of different jurisdictions, you know, in a variety of capacities, looking at these types of questions or similar questions that that you know, that 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 you folks were interested in. I would say this, that that the findings on the stop side in particular are are, you know, somewhat, you know, unique, not unique, but they're they're uncommon, I would say. Most jurisdictions, you know, demonstrate a more clear pattern of some difference in stops, depending on which group you're looking at, and certainly depending in some cases on what benchmark is is used. So I think this is this is really a testament and a sort of something that the the city and the police department should be proud of, that that the nature of of their data don't demonstrate any real, you know, clear pattern of of anything other than unbiased activity. And then if we think about arrests, again, that's that's an area, and I I reference this just briefly, you know, sort of in my remarks. But that's an area where there's, I think, a sort of a mixed bag in terms of what we see happen empirically in different jurisdictions around the country and at different time periods. Certainly, some studies have demonstrated pretty clear effects that, you know, communities of color or persons of color or groups of color have experienced higher rates of arrests, but that is not always consistent. And and, you know, it's also often driven by or it's it's complicated by our ability to to fully, you know, measure and understand the nuances of these encounters. Police citizen encounters are complicated and fast moving, and and we don't always have the best, you know, way to to measure all of the the nuances of it. So but but I would say for for your, you know, for your community, these are positive. You know, you should be proud of these results in terms of the actions of of the of the agency and what they're doing. And I think that they, you know, certainly fall on the side of of, you know, other jurisdictions have these types of results, but it's they're not they're not common, I would say.
Okay, so I'm just going to try to recap what you said, and you can say if I got it or not. So in your experience, you have seen data that could suggest racial bias in policing as a whole?
Yes.
Okay, so and in this situation, you are seeing data that leads you to the conclusion that our department is doing a great job of trying to remain as unbiased as possible, because we are are human, we all have biases. But they're doing a good job of trying to remain neutral in their job in keeping our community safe. Could would you agree with that statement?
I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair characterization.
Okay, great, because I want to make sure that no one is construing this as us saying that we believe there is no racism in policing. I want to be clear that in my comments, that I believe that our department is doing an exceptional job and that that is to be commended and that it's important that we keep looking at this so that we can catch something if something happens, because we don't want to be a city that looks the other way and has and has something negative happen in our community. So I appreciate that Chief Young took this project on and and led our community through this. And I I would love to hear some feedback from Chief Young if if this is something that he can see continuing in the future as as being an important important to his role as the leadership of our department.
Yes, Councilmember Kick, thank you for that comment. And I just wanted to say that I'm I'm very proud of the officers, the work they're doing. When we went into this project, I went in not really knowing what would happen. I thought that I knew what would happen because I know the quality of officers and community that we have. And so I I wasn't surprised by the result, but I was also prepared to deal with any issues that Rob found. And so I hope to do this. I think there's a lot of value in data. I think we always have to be looking at ourselves and making sure that we're the best that we can be. And so I I do want to continue this examination as we go forward at some level. And I really appreciate the expertise of the experts in the field. And so I I do hope to continue this.
Great, thank you. And, you know, for the officers that aren't watching tonight, give give my personal thanks for their cooperation and participation in this, because I think it's going to be beneficial for the entire community once they see these results.
Councilmember Monroe.
Well, I I would like to add my thanks for the work that was done both by Professor Tillyer and I just forgot her partners name. My my apologies. And for the the Chief Young for being willing to just say, look, I'm willing to take what comes. When, you know, I I was the member of the the city council who served all the way through when we began this project. It was after the murder of George Floyd, which is, by the way, was judged by a jury, and the person who committed that murder was sentenced. Therefore, I believe it is objective or it is by our legal standards, a murder. That after that, we as a city took a look at what we what we wanted to do. We responded first by only looking at policing. When Mayor Warner, who was then my the the Bob who was who served with me on that subcommittee, reached out to the community, what we found in talking to people is that the problem seemed to be broader and not located within the police department. This data actually supports that that initial judgment. When we reached out, part of the reason we we asked the committee, the council as a whole to expand the scope was because systemic racism isn't something that it's, you know, it's systemic. Systemic means it happens in a system. The city is part of that system or is that system or is part of, depending on where where you want to draw your lines. And therefore, what we have now learned is that one piece of that has actually worked really hard over the course of a number of years. This data is sort of the culmination of, huh, did that work? And the answer is it worked. So that speaks to how with effort and with work and with intentionality, which I know the police department has engaged in over not not just with Chief Young, but prior to that with Chief Harris. Systemic systemic racism can be changed in and throughout the institutions. And so I think it speaks well for what we what we have to live up to as a city, as a whole, as a country, as a whole. That's a little bit, you know, I'm philosophizing Mayor Warner. But I think it's worth putting this in that in that larger context. I also appreciate Councilmember Kick's question about the context. She beat me to it. I was going to ask that same question. I have one other comment, which is one of the things I noticed, Professor Tillyer, in your in your work is that it's like the benchmarks are hard to come by. We don't have all the data we want. And that's just that's sort of a note for how science works in general, is that we we work with what we have. We don't always have everything we want. Our results are always going to be imperfect. But this was great work, and thank you very much.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thanks. I fully support the comments of my colleagues. I also want to recognize that, looking at the attendees at this meeting, I see quite a few from the Equity and Inclusion Group that I was part of as well. And so I certainly thank those folks that were part of many, many meetings over several weeks and months for being here tonight to get the report from Professor Tillyer and Professor Smith. So again, I want to recognize that they're here and appreciate them being here. I also wanted to commend Chief Young and his officers. Chief Young, I think it took a lot of courage on your part to agree to this and to go at it enthusiastically with your full support. So anytime you dive into these things, you're always a little concerned about what the answer. I know you're confident what what you expected the answer to be, but you never know until you actually look at the data. And I appreciate your willingness and your your support of this through the process, and I hope we can continue. And by the way, the chief has formed an advisory group for those that are listening moving forward. And so made up mostly, I think, with people from the E and I team that we worked with for so many months. Lastly, Professor Tillyer and Smith, I I thought the report was just very thorough and very, very well done. I spent a lot of time reading that and trying to understand the nuances of all the statistics. And I think it is very, very well done, and I applaud you and your team. I know you've been at it for a while, so you have a lot of experience, but it really shows in the way you tackled the the data, did the analysis, and I thought it was a very thorough, well-written report, and I certainly appreciate that and your participation this evening. So again, thank you to you, and please express my thanks to your colleague, Michael Smith, too, because I think you guys did a terrific job. Thanks.
Appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Banana.
Yeah, well, I will just echo pretty much everything I heard from my colleagues tonight. Couple got a couple of things I really did appreciate the work that Professor Tillyer and Smith did. I really learned a lot from really understanding the sort of the nuances of these benchmarks, which are clearly sort of the foundation of of this analysis. And the report, I thought, described those very clearly and was very helpful for me in digesting the results. I think just the entire equity and inclusion effort, as I think we've had a chance to comment several times before in the past, really appreciate my city for and proud of my city for taking this effort on over what was a couple of year effort, I think, coming maybe maybe concluding tonight, but probably not concluding really, because I think this this is sort of part of our our DNA now. And I think that just want to really congratulate our police department for not only the results, but for the willing to be willingness to be examined this way, reflect reflected on and analyzed. And I think it's sort of important for all of us, all our city departments should be willing to sort of open up to constructive assessment of how we're doing. And and I think that it only leads to a better outcome for our citizens. So also want to thank our councilmembers Carling and Monroe for the effort. And Mayor Warner, before that, really, this was a this was a long effort, and I know you guys did an awful lot of leading through this whole process. So thank thanks, everyone who participated in this and the community members who served on the committee and the community members who speak up during these meetings on the topic, because agree or disagree, you know, the ability to all share our opinions, I think, is just super important. So I'll and also the Chief Young, who I think is sort of leads his leads his police department with great integrity and appreciate all your efforts. So I'll just end it there. Thank you.
See, Councilmember Carling, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I just I neglected to mention that Christine Martin was also very key to the participation of all of us in this E and I. She attended as many meetings as Councilmember Monroe and I attended. So I certainly appreciate the efforts that she put in since she's acting city manager this evening. I wanted to point that out for the public, as well as all the other city staff that participated, which there were many. So I I think I neglected to to bring that up earlier. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
And and I did too, and I just can't let Councilmember Carling speak for me on this one. I have to say it myself. But but so I do. Thank you so much, Christine. Thank you so much to all the staff who participated, and I'll give a shout out to the to the to the facilitators as well. So yeah, this is this is really good news, and and thank you all.
Okay, I I think, you know, my fellow councilmembers have expressed a lot of the appreciation to everyone for the the great result. I would want to focus in on, it's pretty incredible that our police force has acted in this unbiased way, and that's not an easy thing to do. And that's where, you know, the training and the commitment to acting well is pretty incredible. And so it's it's fantastic what was done. And I think that there are many people involved, and they all deserve credit. But it it really comes down to the people in the field are they're with the way they act, we can all be very proud of, and the people who lead them. And I I think it's great that the that we reacted to the murder of George George Floyd the way we did, and that we had a good conversation. We had actions that were taken that are helpful, and this is one of them, but there are there are many others. So this is really good. So I've got a a couple of questions. The first one is, I think we've I've heard that, you know, people suggest that we keep monitoring this. And this is a technical question for Dr. Tillyer. How many months of data do you need in order to get a significant sufficient statistical significance? In other words, we can't do this every week. Probably can't even, I don't know if we can do it, is a year enough, or do you need two years?
Yeah, no, it's a very good question. You know, I I would say in terms of the the statistical piece, you know, you're going to have enough instances of police and and driver contacts and encounters, you know, within a fairly short period of time. But but generally, I would say when agencies ask sort of how often do we take a an assessment of 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 what we're doing, I would say it's it's in, you know, a one to two, you know, maybe at the at the outset, maybe three year period. I think to get a to get a sense of kind of, you know, how things are progressing. I don't think, you know, and 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 it can come in different forms, too, you know. In some situations, you know, I've worked with agencies where we sort of built some things that they can sort of check more regularly on their own, maybe every three to six months internally. And then maybe in a longer interval, they reach out for a more in-depth, you know, sort of assessment from from somebody. sort of assessment from, from somebody like myself or, you know, somebody who's more independent. But, you know, I don't, I don't, I definitely wouldn't recommend anything, you know, you know, quicker than a year and that sort of thing. It's probably, you know, maybe a year to every other year is, is a reasonable sort of time period.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I would ask for the Chief Young and you to get together and come back with a recommendation, you know, after you've thought it through for what makes sense for continuing to monitor this.
Sure.
So that's, that's great. So wonderful work. Then the, the next question I have for Chief Young. Have you figured out yet how to appropriately celebrate this? And the related question is, we talked about the newsletter earlier. Is this, for instance, going to be in the newsletter? But what are your, I don't want to put you on the spot if you haven't figured it out yet. But, and I, and I specifically use the word appropriate for making sure that we, we are, can be proud of this in the right way and that everyone involved feels appreciated. So have you any thoughts on this?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I couldn't be more proud of the officers and the, the team that we have, the support from the council and the city staff. And I think, you know, for one, just the comments we heard here tonight from, from our leaders are very important to the officers. And I know they're listening. So that's the first step. Secondly, you know, I'd like to wrap up this meeting a little bit, send them an email in the morning and let them know how it went. And then we're looking to do a press release to kind of celebrate that with our community. So those are some of the things I have in mind. I know we do an annual award ceremony, I hope we did before COVID. So when the safety increases a little bit, maybe we can invite you to one of those awards ceremonies and we can talk about it at that point as well.
Okay, thank you. I would just suggest to figure out what's, what's the, the right way to celebrate this. So that, that's, that's my final thought on it. Is there, see, any other comments on this? Otherwise fantastic. This is the way to summarize it. Councilmember Monroe.
Sorry, I don't mean to jump in at the last minute, but I guess there I am. So your comments, Mayor Warner, made me think about one of the, one of the things I've been struggling with, with, with how we go forward with equity and inclusion. And this is, this kind of data, so, so this is sort of a, a, a general question about how we can apply the process that we use in this case to other areas of the city. And if there's a way to do that. So this might be something for a longer discussion. We're probably moving off topic. But it does seem to me like we have a model. We have a model for how to think about intentionality in training. We have a model for thinking about how to evaluate. And I guess my, my question going forward is, is there a way to take this outside the police department? And now the, that, now, now our city attorney will probably say, and you're overstepping, but there we go.
I think, yes, I do think you will have an opportunity in your next agenda item with regard to matters initiated.
Works for me.
Just going to say that. So, okay, this one is, as I said, let's just, let's just leave it with fantastic. And let's figure out the right way to celebrate this. So that, thank you very much. It's just incredible. And thank you, Dr. Tilly, for your great work on this. Very helpful.
Much appreciated. Thank you for your time tonight. Take care.
Okay, thank you. So we're on now to Agenda Item Eight, which we had the good segue to already. It's the Council Committee Reports Matters Initiated by the City Managers, Attorney, Staff, Council Members. So let's see, where do I go first?
Me. Considering I helped make the spreadsheet, I am the worst at filling out spreadsheet. Therefore, I have to tell you all the things I did so I can meet our reporting requirements. TVC, TVTC Tri-Valley Transportation Council is still working on our new proposed funding model for new development and how that's going to be used for transportation. Meetings have been extended. So we will be doing this a little bit later, but the public hearings will be happening soon. So the public will have a chance to weigh in. So you can go to the TVTC website to find out how to participate. I participated in an advisory body interviews with Vice Mayor Banano and got to meet some great people that I'm excited to get more involved in the community. Our Fire Joint Powers Authority also met. And I encourage the community members that might be listening to advocate to our supervisors who actually have the ultimate authority over what happens with ambulance services that the people that are providing ambulance services in our county aren't doing a great job. And it is, our, our citizens are fine, let, let me be clear. Because our fire department is making sure that they're well taken care of and they're there. But it's hard on our, on our fire department. So show up to the board meetings so you can advocate for our fire department to get the support they need from our ambulance services. LFTA meetings, nothing too significant there. We did, we have a special new rap on one of our buses to, to celebrate John Madden. So there's, there's a Madden bus now that you can ride around town. And our rail authority. Nothing too major there either. We're just still working on getting a train and funding and all of those good things. So I think that's it. And I do not have any matters initiated tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carling.
I don't have anything to add beyond what I submitted this morning. Thank you.
Councilmember Monroe.
Well, I suppose I might as well start with a matters initiated, which I, was, was the segue into this. So I, I don't really know how to frame this, but I'm wondering if, how, how would I go about having a discussion, whether it be as a subcommittee or as a council discussion on taking the material, the principles and practices that were put in place by the police department and by the gathering the stop, stop data into practices is in some other areas. So this would be sort of a follow-up to the, you know, the, the work that the Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee did. But, you know, as, as we're trying to put those, those things into practice, it seems to me we had 10 areas that we, 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 we listed. Some of those were how to engage the community. Some of those were around housing, housing and so on. So I'm wondering what would be the appropriate way to move what we saw into those areas?
If I could make a suggestion, and we've, I guess, only two of us can talk on this thing, is that you work with Christine Martin and come up with some thoughts? And then, then you can bring it back to us in an agenda item. If you, or a memo, or depending on the level of what you come up with. But I think if you got with Christine and you had a memo, then we could go from there.
That's a great idea. I, I think I'll do that. Christine, you up for that? You don't have to answer.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay.
Just counting noses here, not heads. Do we have a quorum concurring with that direction to bring back some of the council? Looks like we do. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you for helping me through that. I didn't know how, how to make it happen. All right.
Movement in the head. So is, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I do. Actually, I have a couple of things. So I have a number of things I turned in and I wanted to elaborate on a couple of them. One was, I was at the Tri-Valley Cities Council Dinner. We had legislative reports out, which I'm not going to speak to. But we also had a presentation by Rick Shumway of Stanford Valley Care on the need for the, the Tri-Valleys need for Level Three Trauma Center and the bringing, bringing, bringing that to the supervisors, the Alameda County Supervisors shortly. So I just wanted to alert people to that because I hadn't really thought through. This sort of ties into the ambulance problem. But if, if you are traveling a long distance in critical situations, it's not a good thing. And so the point that he was making and the, the points that have been made over the past few years, and the city's written, supporting this, is that ha- having a trauma center within range, particularly in area where we have a lot of traffic, which 580 does on a regular basis, is fairly important. So I just wanted to bring that to people's attention. And then the second is that I met as part of the Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Committee of the League of California Cities. And we were looking at the, you know, part of what we were doing was talking about the projects going forward. So, but looking for ways to increase affordable housing funds, simplifying the process for funding, for, for getting funding, making sure that there's infrastructure, and then looking towards the appropriate use of CEQA to in, preserve what CEQA was intended to preserve without throwing up roadblocks where roadblocks are intended to prevent development. So that's what that group is going to be working on for, on the, on behalf of the cities. And again, I thought that was just worth elaborating on. If anybody has comments on that, I, I'd sure love to hear from public on that or anybody else, no, from the public on that. So that's, that's what I've been doing. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Banano.
I'm just going to leave it based on what I put in my report and I'll just turn it back to you.
Hey, thank you. A couple of things I want to mention that are happening at the county level that are very, I think, important. One is, I'm on the mayor's homeless working group and ad hoc working group. And we're, and also with the Alameda County Mayor's Conference. And we're trying to line up a framework for dealing with homelessness and the attendant problems. And so we're in the process of, of doing that. And the idea is that we have a lot of agencies, there's a certain amount of money. And if we can, as a region, agree on how we're going to approach this, it's much more effective. So that's one thing that's in process. And the next step is to get the Board of Supervisors to, in, you know, agree with that and sign off on some things. So we're working that. The other thing that was mentioned by a couple of the council members is that we do have a serious issue with our ambulance service. That's come up at our JPA meetings with the Little More Pleasant Fire Department with, we manage jointly with Pleasanton. I got that item on the agenda for the mayor's conference. And so we're going to be talking about it in more detail. I'm also going to show up at the Alameda County Board of Supervisors Public Safety Subcommittee on the 17th and make an ask. But basically, the situation is we're not getting the service that is, we're supposed to get contracted for. And on the critical areas, the provider has not met the metrics for five months in a row. So technically, they're in breach of contract. That's a serious thing doing that. The other issues that are in here that I just want to alert everybody to are, with the contract, there's an exclusivity clause. And with the situation we're in now is the provider is not providing the service, but others are prevented from providing it because of the exclusivity clause. So one option that I'm going to push for on Thursday is to say, have the supervisors step up here and tell the service provider, we don't want to go to breach, but we've got a release on the exclusivity clause while they're not meeting their metrics. So that rather than have it a, a black or white, and no contractor or a contract, we have to have some way through this. So that's, that's what the position that I'm going to push for. The other thing that I should mention that's involved here in this ambulance service, just for everybody knows, is that the, there's the, what's called a business model. Right now, we have a, the county is contracted with a private company to provide the service. And that private company is doing the billing. If you have a public-private partnership in which the public entity does the billing, you have more sources of reimbursement that you can tap. So it's a complicated thing. It's a serious problem that we have. And there's a fair amount of effort to focus sufficient attention on it so that the supervisors solve the problem. So I just wanted to give a little bit more information for those that might have heard that we have an issue with the ambulance. So we, we know we have it and we're pushing to try and deal with it. And what happens is, this was also mentioned, we have the, because the ambulance company can't provide the requisite service, then we're tapping into our fire department and then that's having an impact there as well. So we're, we need to solve this and we need to put pressure on the supervisors to step up and solve it, frankly. So that's all I have. And with that, going to adjourn now to a special closed session meeting on February 22nd, 2022 regarding the city manager recruitment. And then we'll have a regular city council meeting on February 28th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And both of those will be held virtually using soon. So thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.